I'd like to call the meeting to order. We will begin with our policy review. Ms. Kathy Lennon, you want to go ahead and start with that?
It's been awhile since we've had policy review. We'll start with policy 5.400, personnel health examinations, communicable diseases. No change.
I have a question.
Yes?
Yeah, looking for my notes. I think it was some language in the policy regarding the board as making a decision. Yep, alright. So in the third paragraph, it says, "No employee who has any communicable disease shall perform his or her duties in any location where such might endanger the health of school children. The board shall require any employee to submit to a physical examination." I was just curious about the language there about the board giving that direction whenever we don't actually come in contact with those employees?
State law.
Is that state law? Okay. Mr. Highlander says it's state law, that it be directed by the board?
We have a TCA reference.
It's there, so I think it is that the statute references the board. And I think it's more of the authority. I would imagine, meaning it's under the authority of the board in the policy, so I would imagine where you're covered in that, Dr. Johnson being your employee, he would carry out.
That makes total sense. I was more thinking, were we supposed to approve these things at a board? You know, like, okay, sounds good. Well, that was it for me.
Was that all for 5.400? Okay, 5.401, acquired immune deficiency syndrome. No change. Correct. No change. 5.403, drug and alcohol testing for employees. We revised that in March of 2019. Any questions? 5.503, complaints about school personnel. Any? 5.600, staff rights and responsibilities. HR. Any questions on that one? No change. 5.6001, workplace violence. HR, there were some changes. Keith, would you like to?
Just really clean up language a little bit.
Okay, just to clean up the language. Do you all have those changes in front of you? Does anybody have any questions? Rhonda?
The only thing, I know that some teachers have had their personal valuables have been damaged by students. Do we have a way by which to reimburse these teachers for things that have been broken or destroyed by students? We do have a way to do that? It's, okay, that's another policies, but it's not in this one then? Okay. Okay, I just want to be sure because I know that's happened some, okay.
5.601, staff conflicts and interests. No change. 5.602, time schedules and extra duty. There were some changes. Keith, do you have anything?
So this is really just to align us with practice, policy with practice. It's related to school personnel. And issue is, you know, some of our secretarial clerical assistants, ed assistants don't always get a lunch. So to be in compliance with wage and hour law, we actually pay for that lunch.
Dr. Highlander?
Keith, on this, the length of time for lunch breaks and the two and a half hours had been negotiated with the memorandum of understanding for teachers, that cannot be negated by a building administrator, can it?
So, a little more clarity around your question, Dr. Highlander. When you're talking about the 2.5 hours and lunch, the MOU provides for that, and that's what we expect to happen.
Okay, so that's not arbitrary. That's essential across the board, every school, every employee.
That's what should be happening. Now, you know, there's always situations.
Exceptions, sure.
Situational issues that need to be addressed, but in general, that's what we would expect to be happening, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Tucker, did you have a question? 5.604, overtime pay of classified personnel. No change. 5.605, staff gifts and solicitations. Ms. Thurman?
Yeah, this is one that, and I'm not sure, it says, "No organization may solicit funds from employees within the schools. Flyers or other materials related to fund drives shall not be distributed through the schools without the written permission or the approval of the director of schools." I know that I got this, an email here from a teacher who actually brought it by to me today, and it's ironic that this was on the agenda for tonight. This is from Unifi Ed soliciting donations from teachers. This is not appropriate. And I don't know if they, I don't know if it went to all teachers, not real sure, but this teacher said she had asked to be taken off of their list, and evidently so far has not. But anyway, it just says, "Donate or sign up to volunteer or become a member." So they're asking for donations here, and I don't think that's appropriate. So I guess that's the kind of thing it's referring to. I'm not real sure.
May I ask a question?
Dr. Highlander?
Yes, ma'am. Was that, was that on their personal email or is that on school board email?
School board, it's hcd.org.
Okay, okay.
So that's something that we can control in-house. And it's even worse if the teachers click on donate and they do the transaction on our computer. That's, I've known some people in this school system that have missed days of work, paid for work for doing those things. So I think some people need to be made aware.
So does she have a copy of the email that she can forward, or can someone forward us the email? And then I think, are we saying, I just do want to be clear, like, we do United Way fundraising drives, we get through HCD announcements when folks are raising funds. So are we saying that per this policy, we don't want anyone to be able to solicit through school email?
The policy says it has to be approved by director of schools.
So.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would assume that the donors choose campaigns would also apply to this, which is specifically for like teachers raising money for their classrooms, right? So.
Right.
And Brett may speak to this. I know we changed the policy around donors choosing crowdsourcing so that the principal level has the ability to approve it at the building level. Generally speaking, system-wide fundraisers, which the only one I really know of off the top of my head is United Way, I do end up approving that one. So if there's something going out from a blanket standpoint, it'd be system, it'd be system-wide, come to me for approval.
Well, I really don't think we can, I'm sorry, can I? Okay. I don't really think we can control what people send us, because I get all kinds of things sent to my HCD. I think it's how, if we react to them and if we continue to let them do this, and if we see that there's interaction there, that's where the problem comes from.
Do you, I guess, question for Rhonda, or really anyone, do you think this needs some additional language in order to really spell that out? Because I, I don't, this isn't clear to me. If I were an employee, I would be questioning what I'm allowed to do and not do then. So are we, like, are we pulling these to make edits tonight? Like, we're not voting on these tonight, right? Yeah, just a first read, okay.
This is first read.
I was just going to suggest maybe just someone pull this and add some language then.
Yeah.
Because I do think the language right now is more about the physical location of the building and people coming in and doing like onsite solicitations. So email gets into a whole nother vein. And to Ms. Thurman's point, that we have, employee email addresses are a matter of public record. We have people all the time who send us incoming solicitations for conferences, for, you know, materials, any number of things that they just literally have pulled the email addresses from our website, and we're getting a spam essentially inside of the district. So I think if we, you know, the guidance that we're looking for, that we can make some edits, and I'll take notes around what do we want to say about email solicitation, I think.
So to that point, so our business is digital marketing, and there are actual federal laws related to, it's called, they're called CAN spam laws, that people are required to adhere to to be able to send bulk emails. I know, like to, Nikia, you're mentioning how people will pull email addresses. I know in the last month or two, I've started getting emails to my HCD from Hunter Art Museum, for example, and I think those have a donate link at the bottom of them. Now that, I think they may have pulled from a public record. Another way that people might get emails, like for example, if we all attend a TSBA event, we put our name on an email list, then they have them. The fact that a user would click unsubscribe is something that, if they unsubscribe legally, the email system is supposed to remove that, scrub that address from the system. So that's really on the side of the sending organization to take responsibility for that, I think. And so for example, I know that if a client of ours gets X number of spam complaints, they actually could be blacklisted and not be allowed to use the email system anymore. So I feel like this, this does seem to me to be more about people actually soliciting from our employees when there's so many things that are just more of a newsletter. Did you ever attend an event? Did you sign up? This gets a little muddy.
Anybody have any else, anything else about that one?
I guess Scott, what's the best way to fix this?
Yes, agree.
Because, I mean, we're in a different time.
Yeah, agree.
Yes, just for, I'm sorry.
Well, mine is a different thing, so we can finish email.
Well, just a point of clarity around process, you know, this is a work session here, so you'd have a first reading, so we could, we can pull this policy very easily and run it through Scott, and we'd put it back on the next one, just our process, we're trying to get back on track with our process, so we're good.
Tiffany?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment about email. Just, I think Steve brought up a good point, which is that if someone was to respond to the solicitation like via their personal email, like that should be exempt from this policy, right? So anyways, just a thought on how this is written, so.
I wondered, and this might be something for Scott as well, the words token value and material value, wasn't certain that those had an actual legal definition, and I felt like they were unclear.
Very ambiguous, very ambiguous.
Yeah, I think our follow-up will be to ask, because we, Keith had the same comment, so I'll add token value to that, and then we'll ask about the email language, and have, hopefully Scott can help us craft something.
And Tiffany, to your point about how an employee responds to an email, I think there's definitely First Amendment rights things that Scott would think through with that, because we, we only have control over what an employee sends from their email to a certain extent legally. So, yeah, we could get into all kinds of.
Thank you. Tucker?
Just might want to remove MySpace from that.
Insert Instagram.
Insert Instagram, Snapchat, whatever you want, but MySpace might be a little outdated there.
10.
10.
It was super dead in 2010.
Isn't it still a living website? It is. Some people just logged into their MySpace page yesterday. A bunch of accounts got deleted. They got deleted.
Nikia, we're showing our age here.
I don't know, I don't forget this.
I'm glad to have youth on the board here to keep us up to date.
We did, you know, I looked at this, and since it said all social media websites, and it was kind of just making a reference, I don't know, we could remove names in general and just put like social media sites, so.
I love it. Thank you for keeping us up to date. That's great. 5.608, tutoring for pay.
Skip that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. 5.607, non-school employment. That was revised in March of 2019. Maybe that's why I skipped it? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
5.608, tutoring for pay. No change. 5.609, reimbursement for personnel, for personal property.
Sorry, I have a question about 5.608.
Yes.
Okay. So under this policy, we or the school is not responsible for whatever agreement the parent and the teacher make for tutoring, correct? Like, it is a completely separate agreement from HCD. Correct, okay. I don't, I don't know if it's worth adding language that states that, maybe, maybe it doesn't really matter, but I don't know, I think it might be worth adding some language just to make it clear that we are not responsible for whatever that agreement that's made. So in case like some, I mean, I guess things could go awry.
Hey Brett, do you think that, I know that this came up with this spring when we were talking with the band about tutoring, and, I mean, about fees and band instructors and bringing people on for special lessons, and you can't do that. Does this fall under that category as well, how you can't?
So for the, for the band and the other performing arts where they were bringing in non-faculty personnel?
Yes, yes.
I would say it's two different issues. I think the, what we want to do with, with non-faculty personnel that are interacting with children on behalf of school-sponsored activities, we want to make sure that they are background-checked and paid in a similar fashion as non-faculty athletic coaches. Right now, we have a process for paying non-faculty athletic coaches and doing all the proper background checks. We need to implement that process with marching band consultants and other personnel that are coming on the campuses. So that's a separate issue. I think this would be allowing teachers to get paid for tutoring outside of school hours, which would be something they do on their own. Is that right, Keith?
Ms. Lennon?
Yes, Mr. Highlander.
If I could get some clarity from Dr. Towns Edwards or whoever. School facilities may not be used for private profit. A teacher, let me, just for clarity, a teacher cannot tutor after school in the school building for profit? Is that correct? I mean, I know a lot of teachers, I know the years I was there, I volunteered and tutored for free at school. But I'm just asking, this is a question from, Dr. Johnson, might, might be your question. Can they tutor if a parent comes to a teacher and says, "May I pay you to tutor my student for an hour after school? I'll pick them up an hour later." Is that allowed? I'm thinking not the way this is phrased. I'm correct?
You're correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I see some looks on some teachers' faces going, I see their eyes searching. I mean, if we're doing that, and, okay, well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I just don't, is that going to hurt the kids if we just shut that down? I don't, I don't know how I feel about that. Because I see some teachers saying, I think I'd probably do that.
It's being done. I see, I see some potential problems with that. I see why Dr. Johnson said that. I see potential problems with it, liabilities, but, I mean, I think it's been done historically, but maybe, maybe we should not. I just want to clarify.
Ms. Lennon, can I say something on that?
I'm sorry, yes.
I think it's very, I know some teachers who have done that, and done it in the community, but not at this, on campus. You know, they meet at the library, or at the Bojangles', or wherever, or at the Panera Bread, and they do it after school. But it's, I think it's very similar to, I mean, as a coach, you're not allowed to, you know, to give lessons, you know. As a baseball coach, I couldn't give a hitting lesson in our cage after school using school property. I think it's, you know, similar, and I could go down the street, you know, somewhere that would let me, let me use that, but I think it's kind of the same premise.
Yeah, we'll confirm with Scott, but we think it's a statutory reference that.
Well, we really need to be sure if this is being done, just to keep everybody clear, this is one of those things that principals need to be sure the teachers understand, so nobody gets in trouble.
Any other questions, comments? 5.609, reimbursement for personal property. Tucker?
Yeah, well, Rhonda kind of brought it up earlier, that student threw down a teacher's MacBook. It's going to be a lot more than that $300 limit. Is there a reason there is a limit on that?
I think it was a good number in 2014.
Many years ago, I had, I was a teacher and had some recording equipment, and the school was broken into, and they took mine, and I thought, they said, wow, $300. Twenty-five years ago, $300 would cover a lot. Now it won't, you're right.
I mean, maybe, I don't know, pleasure the board to put in, you know, value of whatever was, it was $1,200 laptop, and here's your $300, we're sorry. Here's your down payment on another one. It's kind of, but yeah.
Yeah, so some of, so I think it's a good point, some, something for the board to consider, and we can go back and look at this, and we'll probably talk to risk management a little bit, just to kind of get some idea around costs. But laptops will provide for teachers, and so we have, we have some insurance on this. Been here, no, I'm not going to be in here tonight. But we've got some insurance carrier types of things that could kick in and would kick in. If you have, then obviously if it's personal, which this policy is speaking to, then you've got a little bit of a different type of situation.
I mean, I know they get their own, if they have a personal, whatever, could be phone or whatever else that gets stolen or whatever.
Let us, if the board doesn't mind, let us do some digging on how many claims that, you know, we've had over the last year, and see if, or a couple, three years, and let's wrap our arms around what that number could be, because I would, I would hate, we want to do right by our teachers, but then we don't want to get so far out of whack that we open up, you know, we say whatever it costs, and then we're in the catch-22 there.
Yeah, well, I know, Rhonda. I know a teacher got his glasses broken. I mean, you're talking 400 bucks right there, you know, for a pair of glasses. He shouldn't have to pay for his own glasses, so I just want to be sure we cover the teachers on that.
Also pull that one. Yes, Rhonda?
Okay, just not, not just the teacher, this is for any personnel, right? I mean, we have, just any employees, right? So it's not just the teachers, it could be anyone, okay? Those janitors, you know, people in the cafeteria, you know, I want to be sure everybody's covered. Okay, thanks.
Correct.
It seems like also there could be a threshold at which it constitutes a crime within our behavior policy, that then a police report is filed, and, you know, if something was willfully done, yeah, under vandalism in the policy that, as Joe was pointing out, under one of those double-letter, AAKC13.
5.6, no, 5.700, interim employees. Jenny?
I wondered if this policy is in the best interest of Hamilton County Department of Education. I had not seen this document, the one I was looking at was blank. So 5.7, you all have no change. So if you're not concerned about it, Keith, then I guess I can stand down. But the fact that any middle-year hire would then be deemed as interim seems like it would be quite difficult to retain a great teacher. That happened at my daughter's school, they hired a math teacher mid-year, knowing that she doesn't get to stay necessarily. So is this useful?
Well, so typically what we're doing is, we're filling a gap. Typically, it's a leave of absence, could be a mid-year resignation, something like that. And if the teacher comes in and does a good job, then we're going to offer them a position. So this is working right now.
So it's working now? Okay, then.
I just wanted to echo that, I've heard the same feedback that Jenny is giving from a parent's perspective. I've heard similar feedback from a teacher's perspective, but maybe over the last year, you've really kind of turned around how those interim positions have been treated, because in the past, I've been told that, you know, by some of these employees who've called upset, saying that they felt like they did a great job, they got great markings, but they didn't get to continue their role. So anyways, just for what it's worth, just giving you that feedback.
Okay. I think historically, historically, as Mr. Franklin said, the ones who have done a good job, they're, they're filling in a gap, and quite often that teacher's coming back. And they can't take that teacher's job away from them, and they shouldn't be able to, if it's on maternity leave, or whatever, you know, they shouldn't, that's been primarily intended this, so that even though the person comes in and does a great job, but I've seen in the, I mean, not just this administration, but for several, they have picked up and hired those people that did a good job, they did their best, they couldn't guarantee them the same school or same position, because there's rights by federal law that people can come back into their same job.
So we identify, I mean, we identify a lot of potential candidates as they're filling in, you know, for leaves of absences, and that we eventually will make an offer too.
I don't know, I remember a situation when I was talking to Dr. Paul Thomas, he was on the side, wasn't able to go into the rights, he was trying to do something active, but he didn't get it.
Okay.
5.701, substitute teachers was revised in February 2019. 5.702, student teachers, see the proposed revision in front of you?
It's on the back of your printed copy, and it's linked electronically.
Keith, did you have something?
I said, do you want me, I can summarize kind of the changes.
That would be great, thank you.
So, so the first, in the first paragraph, there's several changes. The additional word, or additional language we added in the first couple of sentences is, really what we're looking to do is ensure that a student teacher has an effective, that the teacher that they're going to be paired with is in effect, have been evaluated effective or highly effective. So it's just really being clear about who we're going to pair the student teacher with. What we're deleting is, and this rarely happens, but what it does, it gives us some flexibility. Typically, we will not align a more than one student teacher with a teacher. But there is situations, and like I said, they rarely happen, where we do have a teacher, number one, that has capacity, number one, that's interested or has the desire to do it. In those cases, this, by eliminating this language, it does give us a little bit of flexibility to pair student teachers up with, with highly competent teachers. The other additions here is that we're running placements through human resources does two things. Number one, it, not that we're trying to take the principals out of the mix, but what it does is it really gives the universities one point of contact. So the principal's not having to deal with three different universities trying to place student teachers. The second thing it does for us is we're able to capture that. kind of keep our finger on their pulse as about a potential employee. Then, when you go down on the second, it's just really the next, third paragraph on the bottom, the additions we made there is just that we want to make sure that, understand that the student teacher is not relieving the regular teacher from their responsibility, and just trying to clarify that. And then finally, the other language down there is just kind of clean, a little cleanup on the language, that we're saying no classroom instead of classroom student. And given the director of schools are, I guess, in my, it'd be the case, myself or Justin actually could be a designate.
Great, awesome. Thank you. Questions, comments for Keith? Thank you. 5.800, director of schools. No change. 5.801, director of schools recruitment and selection. 5.802 qualifications and duties of the director of schools.
Mrs. Lennon, I want to address that, if I could. So some of you, and rightly so, have, have, have mentioned evaluation time, and Dr. Johnson and I have had some conversation around that. As you recall, last year, we created a new instrument that has, includes some specific metrics and measurements in his evaluation. And last year, we pushed that back a little bit because, you know, the, of the release dates of those, of those metrics. And Dr. Johnson might be able to speak to it a little bit better than I can, but my understanding is that, yeah, is that when it comes to achievement scores, when it comes to growth, when it comes to the value added, all the different things that the state puts out, they're considering, or maybe more than considering, collapsing all of that data into one, not necessarily one score, I guess, but at one time, to release at one time. And so that has pushed the, the date, surprise, surprise, back a little further. So anyway, did I miss anything, Dr. Johnson, on that?
Traditionally, the state, sometime in June, they release the achievement. Sometime in July, they release the value added, and they come back in August or early September and do the, what's called district designation type of things. So the data kind of rolls throughout the year, and they've just kind of taken in some feedback, because it creates a lack of clarity, I think, in systems and communities around what all that data means. And so they're going to release it all, or unembargo, whatever they have released up from that point on August the 9th. So that's essentially the, the state of it.
So, so having said that, he and I have talked a little bit about, obviously, we know from last year that, I think we need to have some discussion about, do we need to do some more official work, even if it's an amendment, I don't know, to, to his contract, as far as just the dates that are currently in the contract, maybe, obviously, a change to the policy around some of those dates. I mean, if that's, I have no notion to think that the, the State Department of Education is going to be consistent with that, because they don't seem to typically be. But if, if that's going to be what we're doing, you know, we need maybe think about when we're going to evaluate, you know, lining that up with, you know, what we're evaluating our director of schools on. So I'm open to discussion on that, or around that.
My, yeah, call me.
Dr. Highlander.
Okay. If it's, I appreciate very much Dr. Johnson's being willing to be, to work with us last year and on this, and I think he, from what Ms. Wingate said, he's willing to again. But I think to be in line with, with, contractually, we can talk to Scott or Mary about it, but I think we do need to consider changing, if it's okay with Dr. Johnson, to change that evaluation, since the metrics are involved in the state, to, to complete the evaluation when. So we're not in violation of his contract. We, he does not violate his contract. We don't want to violate his contract either. I think it would be appropriate for us, but we can, maybe, maybe, Mr. Wingate, you can talk to Mr. Camp or Mr. Bennett and see what they think. But if, as long as Dr. Johnson is amenable to the change, I would say we should change it to make the contract in line with the metrics.
Well, and I was going to say also, too, we need, we need to probably take a look. I mean, if you look at line 34 there, which, item six, you'll see that says the process needs to take place prior to the July meeting, and then, you know, the evaluation, or our, our final evaluation delivered to the director before August 1st. And obviously, those are not going to come into play. So anyway, I don't know if we need to do something with that now, if we need to pull it, and, and if some other things need to take place along with that. So, you know, my suggestion would be to pull.
Yes, I agree. So, Mr. Wingate, would you like to talk to Scott about that? Thank you.
Joe, just a clarification. Are we pretty confident that the state on August the 9th, or?
Yeah, so they really, let me see this the right way. They released a timeline, and they, they did adjust the timeline that they released initially, based on, I guess, the decision to release all the data at once. So we anticipate having some value-added results back in July. Well, we're in July, July the 29th, I think, is the anticipated date, 28th, 29th. And then there's a 10-day embargo that's set, and so this date is the date from that 10-day embargo. Now, we have no indication that they'll move that back any further. It surprised us that they moved it back first time, because what they had initially communicated to us is the traditional route of the rolling data and the traditional 10-day embargo that's set for achievement. Then there's a 10-day, then when they release your growth, there's a 10-day embargo and what have you. So they, they set the date as August the 9th, based on what they have, and they always want to lead with their story and their narrative around the data, and then ours to follow. So we're as confident as we can be.
I guess, maybe I'm just anxious to see those. I mean, related to the, to the benchmarks that, that, that we saw earlier, and so maybe I'm just anxious. So I hope that does happen.
We're anxious, too.
Policy number 5.900, professional personnel collaborative conferences legal status. Who's KF?
Me.
Keith. I was going, usually it has HR for you, Keith.
So not, not being, I had Scott look at these, both 5.900 and 5.904, to determine were they still appropriately, do we still need them in, in place. And he indicated, per the note, that these were adopted as PECA was being enacted, and he felt like that at this point, and it was a recommendation from TSBA, that most districts had removed this policy, and he felt like that we were, there was no reason that we should be continuing the policy. So, and that would apply to 9.904 also.
Great. Remove two policies. Okay, 5.901, scope of professional collaborative conferencing. 5.902, board collaborative conferencing. 5.903, director of schools' role in collaborative conferences. 5.904, we said we were going to remove that one as well. That's all for policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Lennon. Mrs. Thurman, we're, or to you, discipline.
Okay, yee-haw. This is going to be crazy. Are you ready over there?
Yes.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, what I will do this afternoon is give you an overview of the context of the direction we're going with the revisions of the Code of Acceptable Behavior. This falls in line with Future Ready 2023. Our goal is to become a more efficient and effective operation. Back in the fall, the superintendent gave us some guidance. He came up with five different areas that he felt needed some improvement. And the area that I was given was to take a closer look at the Code of Acceptable Behavior, put a team together, and see if we can bring in a new code that will assist us with addressing some disproportionality issues that we had in our district. First thing we did was compare the old code and what we projected a new code should look like. And I have an example of our old code, and for our 45,000 kids, this is the guidance that we have. It's basically a pamphlet. With the old code, it really didn't delineate ranges, so principals and administrators had a lot of discretion. Matter of fact, I even put a bullet there, unlimited discretion. In terms of appeals, we had a level one or level two appeals. Our principals could suspend more than 10 days if they had a level one appeal, but we found out that may not be the best course of action. And the district, quite frankly, wasn't sure of all of those over 10-day suspensions. And the district felt like we needed some oversight if we had kids out of school more than 10 days. And we actually took our code, and we compared it to other districts in Tennessee, as well as some districts in Georgia. We found out that we had a very, very thin Code of Conduct. The new Code of Conduct, upon really trying to put it together, we have thus far put together a 30-page document that's very clear, that's a tiered approach, it has ranges, it reduces variability. That means that we have what we call guardrails to make sure no one over-suspends or under-suspends, that we really allow the administrator to look at the discipline that's being imposed and try to make a fair decision. It distinguishes, distinguishes discipline hearing authority. We're going to have a group of nine members, the same members of the Board of Education, to now look at all suspensions beyond 10 days and decide whether there needs to be additional days, or whether we need to remand those students to our alternative school. And finally, the code that we have come up with so far, it's very comparable to other districts, particularly our size. If you'll point directions to what's highlighted there, it says, Hamilton County discipline rates are higher for student subgroups. Actually, we were flagged for significant disproportionality. So we really were actually mandated. So this isn't something that we're just doing on our own. We're mandated to really look, take a look at our code, so that we could kind of reduce those suspensions. If you look, we look at comparable districts, we took an average. The dot indicates the average of those comparable districts, and then you could see where we fall in terms of percentages. How the new Code of Acceptable Behavior was developed, we started out with principals. We went to the school level. I know we could have included teachers and students. We didn't want to pull everyone from the school, but we took a look at a secondary principals. The new code will focus particularly on grades six through 12. And we included administrators from all learning communities. We received input from our senior leadership team. We actually took the experience of the principals, some novice administrators, some senior administrators. And we also compared our Code of Acceptable Behavior with other districts, and those are the districts. And the motto that we formatted our new code after was the Broward County, one of the largest districts in the nation. I'll run you through one example, just to show you that we will have some variability. If you take a look, let's just take a look at attendance incidents, incident first consequence. You have letters there, A-B-I-L-N-O-P-E-E and K. I've highlighted that to show you that the administrator, based on the student, based on the investigation, everything that's highlighted in yellow could be the consequence after the investigation is concluded. So we're, the principal can consider it being light, based on the student, first incident, just never had any priors, or it could range all the way to in-school suspension. The goal is to keep them in school, so you won't probably see out-of-school suspension on the first time that a student misses class. But every highlighted area kind of covers the range that the administrator may have. So I just wanted to give you one good example. Now, our goal is to continue to look at this. This document is still in draft form. We actually turned it in to you before it's fully developed, so we know that it's not a finished document. We, we know now, because we've been consulting with the school board attorney, that we are aligned with state, with the state of Tennessee, and it's actually supported by Scott. Scott 100% believes this is the right direction that we should take in terms of administering proper and appropriate discipline throughout the district. Can I hit something? Are there any questions? That was actually the last slide.
If you, if you could just point out the, I think the A within the action legend is the parental contact, and that's a required step every time.
Yes, we had a lot of discussion. Too often, when we have students who want to become a part of our magnet programs, they look at discipline. And sometimes parents say, well, I was never notified for anything. So we're going to try to make it required that if it goes in power school, you have to contact the parent, so that there's no more discussion about, I didn't know that my child had been in trouble. Yes, sir.
Speaking on behalf of the administrators and teachers, sometimes they make serious concerted effort to contact the parent, and the parent does not reply or get back with them. So I think we might need to take that in consideration. They, as long as they document their concerted efforts to, to contact parents, I, I think we need to take some consideration for the administrators and/or teachers making that.
You're absolutely correct. So that, basically, that's the timeline. Our goal is to have this new code into everybody's hands about at least the first week of school. We met with the administrators this summer. They are on board with the new direction, and to be quite honest with, we, we are in compliance with the state now. Subject to your questions.
Do you want to go?
Okay.
Okay. I've got, I've got a handful of questions. What, first, I was wondering, what schools or which principals reviewed this or are part of your committee?
Bradley, we know we had Sadi Daisy, that principal, Hunter, Central. Bradley, we know we had Saudi Daisy, that principal, Hunter, Central. We had a couple of schools from the opportunity zone, I believe it was Eastlake.
Okay.
And we had Tyner Middle.
Okay. That's, I was definitely curious about the schools in my district that were hopefully pulled in on this, so that's good. I would imagine that a large portion of that percentage might come from opportunities on schools, unfortunately. So on page, the page that has digital citizenship statement, I basically have like some logistical questions, like after reading through this. So it talks about each school has the autonomy to establish their own specific guidelines in determining the use of technology during school hours and school events for educational purposes only. I was just curious, like, is there any type of consistency that you're requiring each school to put in place for, like, setting those rules? Or how are we logistically making sure that there's at least some continuity with those rules from school to school? Or is that important to you?
It is important. The discussion we received from the middle school is no phones. From high school, there needs to be a lot of flexibility. So to be honest, we kind of had given you this document before, a lot of this has been fully developed.
Yeah.
But we're still in discussion and wording, and we're gonna probably allow Dr. Edwards to take a look at it, to make sure it's sound. But we're still, that's still work in progress, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, and you might have a similar response for my next question. It's under zero tolerance offenses. I think it's awesome that you guys put threat by electronic device in here. I'm just kind of curious, though, like, again, the logistics behind that, you know, how do we go through, like, what is the process for proving this and really?
Yeah, we get law enforcement involved.
Prosecuting.
We get SRO involved and do actual full investigation, narrow it down to that phone that belongs to that student. That will be enough evidence to move forward with that charge.
Okay. Have we already had to do that to some degree?
I'm quite sure that occurs a lot.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. It's awesome. Well, thank you for all the time that you've put into this. I think that this is one of the most important things that we can do as a board. And thank you, Rhonda, for really pushing the board to focus on this, too.
Steve, go ahead, too. You want to ask my question? Your light's on. Steve?
It's Ms. Lennon was ahead of me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Piggybacking on the, I wanted to find out what principals were part of the committee. So they're only Saudi Daisy, Central, Eastlake, and Tyner, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Signal Mountain.
Signal Mountain.
Signal Mountain.
So my question to you, which is great, but I have a, I just, I think we have to get all the principals on board with this. What's the plan for doing that? I just think that there's always that problem, always that lack of communication of getting everybody to embrace whatever. There's a policy change of system this large, whenever we're doing anything of this magnitude, to get the consistency to make it district-wide, because this is huge. This is something that's really big that we have got to get everybody on board with. And so what is the plan to be able to get everybody on board with, with all of the principals?
Well, to be honest with you, we've met with all administrators this summer. Now, it hasn't been as intimate as the meetings we've had with the committee, but we've asked them, "What are your thoughts?" And to be quite honest with you, we are now in compliance with the state law, because we have been really kind of all over the place. But they understood, unless they have not communicated, you know, fully with me. We haven't gotten a lot of concerns about the new direction. It almost appears they're happy they have some guidance.
Okay.
And some direction based on each offense.
Well, I, you know, I think the consistency is huge, and so the consistency with, say, for example, the dress code, with the cell phones, with, you know, I just think that from going from one school to the next, to another school, if a student is changing, if a teacher is changing, and they're at, say, they're at Signal Mountain, and they come down from Signal Mountain, and they're gonna go to Central, or they're gonna go, and that dress code is so, is so different. I just think that we have to wrap our head around that, because we are such, we have said so many times, we are such a diverse school system, and we're so different. But I think that we don't have to, we don't have to, we can have some things that are the same within our dress code, within our cellphone usage, within our Code of Acceptable, you know, within our policies. You know, we can, we can have some things that are alike, so that when a student changes schools, or a teacher changes, that it is the same. So I think that this is gonna help. But I think it's up to principals and teachers to really look at this and embrace it.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to, I want to get behind it. I want to support it. I want, I thank you for it. But I think that it's gonna take a lot of push on our part and on yours' part to make it happen.
Just to be clear, and I'll say this very openly, like, this, the district has had that pamphlet for probably, I don't know, 10 years, or 15, or 20, or 30, or since the merger in 97. So you've had the pamphlet since 97, and so you're going to a much more robust document. This isn't gonna change overnight, per se, right? So the reality is we'll have to continue to do education and support, and it won't be fixed overnight from the standpoint of, you know, that consistency. But the thought behind this Code of Acceptable Behavior is now you have an umbrella, the board will have an umbrella document that schools operate from, that does create more coherence and consistency, and does give a range. So I think, to your point, Kathy, it will be incumbent upon us and executive directors and working with schools and, you know, everybody to really adhere to it and to support it. So we'll continue that work. But, you know, it is change. I heard somebody say change down here, and it's a significant change from what, you know, what the county has had. So be clear about that.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir, gentlemen, both of you. A lot of work put into this. And I realize it's still in draft form. And I've got three suggestions. One statement, piggybacking on what Tiffany said about digital. Currently, one of the greatest deterrents, it can be, it can be an aid to student education. One of the greatest deterrents is student cellphone use. In secondary, especially middle school, high school, they get, they are social creatures, and if they go to the restroom, they don't need to take their phone with them, because they'll come back in 20 minutes. I promise you, they'll come back 20 minutes or 25 with a phone. They'll come back in five without the phone. So I mean, they are social creatures. So we need to be very careful with this. But one thing on the rights and responsibilities, know when adhere to reasonable rules. You know, I thought that kind of bothered me that we implied that they're not, we're not being reasonable. And I'd kind of worry about the language on that. And then dress and groom in a manner that meets reasonable standards. And, I mean, is it gonna be different from school to school, what's reasonable? You know, I don't know. We, I'm just not real sure, a question mark on that. And then looking on the dress code policy, something on the next page, I noted, I think we need to include anything that causes disruption. I know that's very generic, and I understand why you want to do that. But in the past, I've seen other systems that they add something like including gang or violence symbols, which, I mean, that's just, that should not be allowed at all. Drugs, alcohol, gang-related or violent symbols should not be allowed. I mean, that needs to be across the board. But, and it's probably inferred there, it's inferred, but I mean, I'd like to see it specifically. And then moving down to zero tolerance offenses, zero tolerance is expelled for one unless modified by the superintendent. And we would be notified if you were gonna make a modification to zero tolerance, would we not? It said that you could modify zero tolerance, you know, but as long as, as long as, I just, I'm sure, I'm sure you, he's good about letting us know that. I just want to make sure we know those. Then on searches, refusal to cooperate with a reasonable request may result in disciplinary. I think it should be. If it's a reasonable for a search, I think it's not a maybe, but it should be. But that's just semantics. A little bit of word there. Okay. One other thing, boy, this is really good. It took me hours to look up these letters. I don't know if there's any way you could get a different system. I mean, okay, if this happens, it may just be me, but I'm trying, okay, let me look back and look at this, and you might come up with a better system. I don't know.
The way Broward County had it for each category, their legend was at the bottom. So you will not flip back and forth. But being that we had to turn this into you before we were prepared, we couldn't get it to the print shop to get it formatted correctly, but we will have it on each page, so there will not be any back. We actually gave everyone a handout, so that you wouldn't have to go back and forth.
Thank you. Thank you.
And a lot of the language that you referred to was taken straight from this. We just transferred it. So if we need to increase it, we can. But for the most part, it was just transferred over.
Right. And I simply, I realize in the draft document, I'm just making suggestions. I thought make it a little stronger, a little more clear.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Janie, or so, is that you?
Thank you, Rhonda. I, too, felt some confusion about the words proper use in the technology, the digital citizenship statement, and then the following one about standards of behavior. So any clarification that we can do, I think is important. I mean, obviously, this is much more clear than what we had. And so just as we strive toward perfection, I did wonder some about, with all the choices, are we really gonna be able to meet our goal of consistent implementation of discipline? So it feels a little choose-your-own-adventure, and I, if you all remember those books.
I actually was thinking, if you could just make a choose-your-own-adventure pamphlet in, like, the student side, that, like, students would be very on board with.
Do you not know what choose-your-own-adventure is? So those are books in the 70s, 80s, that you would read part of the story, and then you would say, "Okay, decide if you're gonna fall in the ravine or go surfing," and then you would turn to whatever page, and then that's what that was.
It was like to help with the Action Legend.
Yeah. Which actually brings me to thinking about the rollout with students. Dr. Johnson, you have talked some in the superintendent's advisory council with the students and in other conversations that we've had. I know you had mentioned trying to align the expectations for our students with what it is to be out in the world, what it is to be a citizen of the United States, to be able to hold down a job. And by nature of this being a 30-page policy document, it doesn't feel empowering for a student. I mean, that's not its job. Its job is to tell you what the, what happens when you make a poor choice. But I do think it would be wise if we thought carefully about how we do roll this out with students. I think your superintendent's letter is an excellent opportunity. But then, in as much as we've seen progress with reducing bullying in our schools because of the work that's being done with the superintendent's advisory councils and the individual student leadership teams in the schools, they might have some great ideas about how a student can take ownership of this document and then have personal responsibility for their behavior. A couple other just little things. I didn't understand why all of a sudden we had student athletes, like, bang, student athletes. Maybe that's formatting. Like, that didn't make sense to me.
Are you making the point, though, like, if you're gonna point out student athletes, just point out, like, student?
Well, I just thought it was interesting that we have our Code of Acceptable Behavior, and then we say student athletes. It just, it wasn't part of any other grouping of content the way that.
We noticed that, and we were going to come back and make a recommendation.
That's the format, okay. A picky thing, but important, especially given our history as a district. The glossary includes the word sexual rape, which I know was part of the conversation with the Utawah case. And I wonder if we need a better legal definition there, if it's forcible slash sexual rape, or if we just, whatever Scott says is appropriate.
Okay.
And then finally, so many of these infractions lead to recommendation of talking with a social worker. And I just wonder, given the fact that we may not have a budget that would include many of the behavioral support positions that we were hoping for, how realistic is this to implement? So I guess the follow-up questions would be, realistic to implement and consistent implementation?
You're absolutely correct. We actually began creating this document during the budget, so we anticipated ISS, social workers. We may have to come back and revisit that, because ISS is throughout this document. And many principals were frustrated, because they say they don't have very many choices other than out-of-school suspension. So that was something we just put in the book and was hoping that things went in our favor. But we're gonna have to come back and revise that as well. And as well as some of the social supports that we recommended.
So consistent implementation.
To be honest, what we've shared with the principals is that this is a tiered approach that you start off with, if it's a kid's first time, you start with the lesser consequence, and you work your way up. It will be inputted in Power School, so every time they pull a student up, they'll be able to track it to see exactly where they are. Bradley has done a great job. Every discipline referral has been, will be directly linked and synchronized with Power School. They'll have a menu of choices. So we're trying to make this easier on administrators, so they don't have to do a lot of typing in, but it's kind of very, very clear. So we hope that helps with consistency. Because right now, they have to write almost a notes, as opposed to having a drop-down with all of these offenses. So hopefully, that will help with consistency.
And then, Dr. Johnson, thoughts about rollout?
So a couple of things. What, from experience, what we used to do with this is, we would create some type of very high-level presentation that is available for principals to share with students through their homeroom or advisory teacher. So we'll create some resources around this. Obviously, there's an acknowledgement form at the, you know, at the front of it that lets, that parents have to sign, saying, "Hey, I've read through this and received this, reviewed this with my child." And we'll do a, try to do a bang-up job of sharing and communicating these expectations, and maybe even a video-type tutorial about the high levels of what's within here. So we'll try to hit it on all fronts around the expectation. I think to the point that you made about the entry letter, we'll definitely talk about the expectations of Future Ready and the connection to workforce. I mean, there's a set of expectations for any employee in any industry, you know? And so that's really what this is about, is the preparation that there are expectations for students. So between homeroom and advisory, school-level resources, district communication, our engagement team, Kate's gonna work on that team, we'll push it out through newsletters in learning communities. We'll try to hit it on all fronts.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Just a couple of things here. One, as I was looking at this, it's, I think we can, I hope we can, this board's done a good job, I think, the last couple of years of, just like with policy, of beginning a review of some things, maybe that haven't been reviewed as much as they should have or could have in the past. And I would just like to throw out there that, hey, this Code of Acceptable Behavior, I mean, again, a pamphlet that we've had for multiple, multiple years, that, you know, this document, this Code of Acceptable Behavior, when it is finalized, that we review it, I mean, annually, or maybe even more often than that. I mean, I think that'd be great to be able to do that. I mean, if we, you know, I know we have point people for a lot of other concerns on this board, if, you know, we want to try to do that when it comes to discipline. I think it'd be great to do that. The only other comment I would have is, just from a teacher's standpoint, I think probably need to think a little bit about some teacher training, too. And the reason I say that is, I just think back to my career and also my training. You know, if you've been in a classroom, you know there's no training like being in the classroom. So all the training that took place in a college course or any other training, educational training, there's nothing like being in the course. And I was fortunate enough to work for some really good administrators who were consistent with discipline when it reached them, when it got to that level. But also know that those good administrators, there was an expectation that I consistently administered discipline. And they didn't really necessarily, they let me be autonomous with that, but they needed to know that it was consistent. They gave me freedom in the consequences that might be applied in my classroom, but they wanted that to be consistent. And then, you know, I knew that when there was a problem that my disciplinary procedures were not able to correct, that when they, when it got to them, they were gonna, you know, take it. And I knew what to expect. I knew exactly what to expect when it got to them. So I just think, as teachers, especially new teachers, whether it's with a mentor, whether it's some other type of training, I know we've talked about some other types of behavior management training, but just... of behavior management training, but just, you know, that, I mean, because they're the ones that are in there, you know, I know boots-on-the-ground, we use that a lot, I don't like to use that as much, but I mean, teachers, they need to, they're, they're a big part of this, so, some training for them, too. So, that's all that.
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Most of my questions have already been addressed. The key, I think, is consistency, Dr. Bradshaw, and that's already been said, and the kids that, you know, that I see, it's just unbelievable, the same offenses, how different principals are doing different things. And, so, you know, they'll come to group down there, and they talk about, well, I did this, but I got this, and why I did this, but they didn't do that to me, and, so, you know, kids can't hear what we say, because they see what we did. So, if we're going to adopt this, then we need to adopt it, and everybody play by the rules. The other thing, too, we, we talked some, Jenny kind of addressed it a little bit, you know, not having the social workers and the other interventions that we thought we were going to have, which is disappointing. I mean, I don't know how, where are we going to do this? I mean, that, the class, the teachers have so much they have to do, and, you know, they're, and I've said this before, I'll say it again, they got to be the police, and the doctor, and the nurse, and they got to do everything, and then sometimes, maybe they get to teach a little bit, and we don't have nobody to help, and now we're going to give them this, and tell them to do this, too, and, that's just heartbreaking, disappointing. The other thing that was a little bit confusing, on the action legend, and if I look at HH, and let me just kind of give you a, a real specific example, first offense, I came to football game, I've been drinking, smell it on me, so, HH is one of the actions that's going to take place, and it says, suspension more than 10 days. So, I, help me understand that, I mean, is that going to be 100 days? Is that going to be 20 days? What's, what does that mean, more than 10 days?
The cap means that you can't exceed 10 days from suspensions at the school level.
Okay.
If the principal feels that the consequence should be more than 10 days, they will, the parent can appeal to Bradley, and then we'll have a hearing, and then, if additional days are given, that will be given at our level, as opposed to at the school level.
Okay, right. Well, that, that, shouldn't that say, then, up to 10 days?
Correct.
Instead of more than 10 days?
Correct.
Okay.
That's
That's all confusion. Okay.
This is actually, to your point, this is saying that you can go, this is the, the offense HH says
More than 10 days, level one.
And it's coming to the
Level one.
Authority
Yes.
To make the determination
Okay.
How many days?
Okay, okay, I got you.
And so, to your point, V, it says, V, option V is up to the 10 days, right? So, op, option V on the same sheet, if you look in the middle column?
Yep.
Option V says out-of-school suspension, six to 10 days. So, that's the maximum that the principal can do without, if you go to HH, then it's got to come to the hearing authority.
It comes, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, 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 I got you, okay.
That's not necessarily a change. The past, I mean, the up, more than 10 days, I think it's actually Tennessee Code annotated, and we've always had that process in place, and any suspension, or even suspensions together that are more than 10 days, a parent has a right to appeal it.
Good.
The big change here, though, is the disciplinary hearing authority, where that process takes place here.
Yeah.
In the past, every area had a level-one appeal, it was at Red Bank High School, and that meant almost every Thursday, anybody in that area appealed to Red Bank, which took up half of my day, and two other assistant principals across that area.
Right, right.
Which were taking that off of schools now. So, we're handling that here, which is a, a big change and time saver, and again, gets back to that consistency. So, the, I mean, I hate to take a minute here, but just as a principal, from a principal's perspective, what Joe said about how the principal sets expectations, consistency, but gives the teacher the autonomy, that's what I view this as, is the board and central office setting the expectations. Schools still have autonomy, so back to the, the dress code issue, schools are still going to be able to set their own dress code, as long as it's within the boundaries of this, right? And, and what this does is ensure that, when a kid does show up and does something wrong, that one school isn't suspending for three days, where another school is suspending for 40 days. So, I think
And that's happened some, that's my whole point.
It has happened some, and, and, and that's, that's not the fault of the principals, that's the fault of us at Central Office, for not setting a clear expectation.
Yeah.
So, what Dr. Bradshaw did in June, we had three-day Principal Institute, just finished it up, the second one today, and we got feedback on his session, and there's two or three negative comments about the code of acceptable behavior, but they're mostly about not having this in their hands yet. The positive comments are about looking forward to it, it makes sense, so I think administrators, once they get their hands on it, and work with it, it's going to be a, a change. Change, anytime you go through it, though, you're, we're going to have to come back to this, maybe even review it at the semester.
May I say one other thing, Rhonda, now?
Sure.
I'll give up my time, and, and just maybe more of a comment than even a question. I know that at times, when we have young people that are expelled or suspended under zero degrees, and, and we, part of their consequence is the alternative school. But I also know of times where they can't get there. I mean, they just can't get there. So, I, you know, I don't know how we fix that, and, and, you know, there'll be people that'll argue, well, it's not our responsibility, and maybe it's not, and, but, you know, it's just shooting our wounded, if you will, you know? I guess the best way to put it, you know, we, we got a young person that's got, he's made bad choices, and he needs to go to the alternative school, you know? And, and, but he can't get there, and, so that's like, you know, shooting the dead. So, I, that worries me, and, okay, thank you.
Tucker, your name's something?
I'm just going to sound like a broken record, but consistency, I shared that with Dr. Johnson, and I think you've heard that from the board tonight. I've seen it firsthand, I've been the person that got a totally different discipline action than someone that did the exact same thing as I did, same principal, same school, same teacher, but totally two different things. I've seen it plenty of times, and just, I, I think it's a great document, I think it's a great living document, in that if we need to come back in December and see how the first semester did, and we need to tighten it up, or, you know, whatever we need to do, but consistency across, like Joe said, teachers to principals, I think is the big push with this and the key to it.
All right, Steve, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I think Tucker just hit on a word that I was thinking about, he said a living document, our constitution is a living document, because amendments are constantly being proposed and made, and, and Dr. Johnson alluded to the fact that we will be addressing this, looking at it, I, I think you've got a great start. But piggyback off what Joe said, too, the strongest teachers handle the majority of the discipline within the classroom, and the strongest principals guide the teachers in doing that, and so, and so then, really, only the serious matter should come to the administrator. But I, I think, to talk about what Joe Smith said, whereas there is a discretion of the principal for three to 10 days, then, like Joe, I mean, there is that discretion, and I think they should have that, because they know this child, hey, this guy, kid has never done anything at all, okay, three days, you know, you did something stupid, it's three days, now this kid's done this, this, and this, okay, you got 10 days, son, or ma'am, you know? I, I think they need to do that, I think we need to give our teachers enough leeway to do it in a proper, in a manner, as, whereas they can handle it, but also, I think we need to do something to get to, for the safety of the, and the education of the rest of the students and the teacher, we need an alternative classroom, and it doesn't have to be a teacher-run, like, if they can't get to the alternative school, we have an alternative classroom that they could go into, and have special ed needs met there, that we could do that, and it could be a paraprofessional, it could, it could be classified, it wouldn't have to be, as long as the special ed needs are met.
Yes, sir.
That's just a comment, thank you.
Just, just real quick, a couple of things, process-wise, just recommend, my recommendation, in former life, I was, student services reported to me, and we had a code of sub-behavior that, and I know several of us have experienced with this, but on a yearly basis, you, you have to review this, because I, I gave the friendships I know, and talking to each of you about, what are they called, Jules, ECIGs, or whatever they're called, ECIGs is about the equivalent of, of, of Jules, it's the same thing, okay? And so, anyways, three, four years ago, that wasn't a thing, you know, and, and then it becomes a thing, and students start to use it, so you have to implement that into your code of sub-behavior. We may, you know, we'll go through this iterative process, and we talked about being the fastest improving, and I know that word improvement is about continuous improvement, and so, you know, Ken will have to bring this group back around, what's working, what's not working, okay? What adjustments do we need to make? That's a year-over-year process that needs to happen. The second thing I mentioned, and we're trying to dig into this more, we've had some conversation with Scott around this, and we've had some kind of, just in general, but our current alternative school structure is probably going to have to change by law, and so, I think to the point that, Joe, you were, you were making earlier, access is becoming a requirement, and there's, there's some current legislation that we're trying to understand a little bit better in collaboration with Scott around the implications of that for our system, and not, you know, the way it's currently structured. So, those are just the two things. The only other thing I'd say, and then I'll turn it back over to Rhonda, is, we, we want to make just a little timeline, we want to, at the 18th, we'll take all this feedback that you've given today into, into, to heart, and, and come back next week, before the, before the board meeting, obviously, we have a budget session, we'll bring refined document back to you with some of those recommendations, and give you a chance to review that, obviously, on the 18th as well, but we'd like the board to codify this document, just because we know it is new, and we know that everybody being on the same sheet of music as we go about this journey of creating consistency around our expectations for students is going to be important, so that'd be it.
Okay, I have a few things here. I talked to some retired assistant principals and, retired assistant principals and principals, had them to go over this and give me some of their feedbacks, I took some of that, took some, some from, from teachers as well. Number one, on this first part, where are we going to have, for parents, it says, parents are requested to sign, are we going to have it mandated to sign?
That's to go mandated.
Because I've seen what a lot of teachers say that happens, of teachers say, well, I never saw this, I've never seen this, I didn't know this was a punishment for my child doing this, so, how are we going to deal with that?
It's going to be required.
It's going to be required. No more requested, okay. Also, about a place to put cell phones, I know some of the teachers said that they had students to lay their cell phones, they have a basket for them to put them in, or a cubby for them to put them in, or something, I don't think that's a bad idea, dealing with cell phones, and only let them have them if they need them for a certain thing, I think that's something that we really need to start doing, is just have them, have a garage for their cell phones when they go into the classroom. Also, Brad, we talked about another acceptable behavior for student athletes on the field, the behavior on the field, is that part of any of this, or are we still working on that?
That's part of it. They were discussing.
Okay, they were just, okay, all right, so, everything's going to, they're all going to be together, the athlete's going to have that one separate?
We'll probably put it together, just for consistency, and not alienate the athlete.
Okay.
It's just going to be one document, that kind of covers extracurricular activities.
Okay. Okay. Also, juvenile court, some things in here, you know, then you go to juvenile court, especially for truancy and things like that. Is juvenile court working with us anymore about prosecuting some of these parents, or holding them more accountable? Where are we on, on that?
We meet with Judge Phil Young monthly, he's aware of our challenges, so it's, it's still work in progress, they're, they're just as frustrated as well.
Okay. Okay. And also, indecent language, who decides what's indecent? Some schools seem to have a very high tolerance for some really bad language.
That's when the
I mean, we can't make a list of words you can't say, I understand this.
The principal has that discretion.
The principal, well, some of these principals need to understand what indecent language is, because I have been in schools, and I heard some words dropped that, I mean, just made my jaw hit the floor, and it seemed like nobody even flinched. So, I think that we need to, and then, I don't know what the punishment is for indecent language, and, and I also don't like the disrespect for teachers, it's yeah, when a teacher answers, ask a question, yeah. I wish we could say no, sir, and yes, sir, and no, sir, and yes, ma'am, and no, ma'am, I think that would be nice, if a lot of schools would take on that policy as well, that when you answer a teacher, and the answer's not yeah, you know, it's just
Yes, ma'am.
Just call me old-fashioned, but, that's right, thank you, you got it. And also, another question about, if kids are 18 years old, they're adults. If they are not on track to graduate, and they are a continual problem, and they're going to count against you on your graduation rates anyway, and they're just going to continue to be a thorn in your flesh, can those kids be put out of school, and told that they have to go to the adult high school, or do what?
So, if they're, if they turn 18 during the school year, you, we're required by law to keep them through the end of the year.
Even if they're a problem and not on track to graduate?
Not necessarily, if, I mean, obviously, if there are discipline reasons, and we have the alternative school, but I, I think that it's important that we remember, we don't have the adult high school, but one of the reasons why we don't have the adult high school is because we wanted to spread those resources to be more accessible across the county. So, for example, now, we're going to have four locations
Yeah, right.
You know, graduation success program, I was having a conversation today with the principal, and recommended, you need to contact Renee now, for the student that is, is right there, like, not quite on track, but could still graduate, and it's a better option for him to go to West Fortieth, or to go to Sequoia
Yeah.
Or to go, so, that, really, what you're saying is why we wanted to look at the graduation success program.
Okay, but really, adult high schools shouldn't be for discipline problems, it should be just maybe for kids that don't get credits for whatever reason, but if you say, if, if they turn 18 during the school year, what if they start the senior year at 18? Is it still the same?
My understanding is, we're not required, if, if a kid turns 18 prior to entering, then they're an adult.
They're an adult.
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
We just got a DCS notice about this, and, and in fact
Well, DCS and special ed would be a different
No, not, not, but they were saying, in general, actually, the guidance is that being 18 alone is, we cannot deny enrollment in our school district. So, to Ms. Thurman's point, yes, if there are extenuating circumstances where we feel like their presence is a disruption to the order of the school
Right.
We can make provisions, but let's say we have someone who moves here, and their, you know, child turned 18 the summer before their senior year, they're on track to graduate, we have an obligation to enroll them in our public school.
Okay.
So, and, and we've just gotten a notice, and, and Dr. Drake and I need to follow up on it, where we did have a contact from the state of Tennessee, that they have gotten some complaints, and we do need to clarify with our principals around the rules to enroll 18-year-olds if they don't have any problems, and to the point that if there are students who are not on track to graduate, we do need to understand the options that we have, now that we've rearranged kind of the, the, what do we call it, graduation expectation or product, success
Success program.
Success program, yes. So, now that we've rearranged that across four areas, we do need to figure out, how do we make those referrals? And then there is, the, the adult high school program is actually now something that's through the Department of Labor, and it's at the CHAT State campus, so we also need to figure out, when is it appropriate that a student just head to that adult education program that's aligned under the Department of Labor and housed at Chattanooga State? So, we'll follow up, and try to figure out all those avenues based on
And that's another thing, Dr. Edwards, I think that parents need to understand that, and they need to understand, you know, these are the options that are going to be given to your child, you know, if they're 18, or whatever, this is going to be their option, so that if they come and they continue to be a problem, then this is going to be the only option they have, they're not going to be able to continue in school, and, and participate in senior activities and those sorts of things. I think that we need to make it a little bit more clear, all the options that are available for students 17, 18 years old, because a lot of 17-year-olds can be a problem as well. So, let's see, those, oh, and some of the teachers have told me, their, their biggest problem is, they send a student to the office, and in five minutes, they're back, and they should have, there's no way you can do any of these things in any of this in five minutes, and if a student, I mean, it's almost like a student's come back, and they, they laugh at the teacher, and it's, and it's a problem for the teacher at the teacher and it's, and it's a problem for the teacher. And they don't feel like they get any support from the administration. And I, I don't know how we, how we address that.
Part of the training this summer, Scott Bennett has shared with all administrators that they're required to do an extensive investigation. If someone writes a referral, you have to investigate. So hopefully we'll do a better job this year. Matter of fact, it's law, you're mandated for due process for the students to get the facts and give a fair consequence.
Okay, and about the bus situation, did you talk to bus drivers? Did they, were they on board with all of the discipline as far as the bus was concerned?
We had David, the transportation director, part of the committee. We didn't include him during the introduction, but he was part of implementing the consequences for bus misconduct.
Okay. And I'm just going to end on this note. Does anyone else have anything to say? Okay, I'm going to end on the note that discipline is our number one priority, in my opinion, because if you take care of discipline, it takes care of just various and sundry other situations that we have. So if that's our number one problem, we need to make it our number one priority in our budget. And if we need these things, then we need to figure out where we're going to get the money, who we can cut. This may be not, is, is not our number one priority and put those people in the schoolhouse where they need to be to deal with our number one problem. If it's our number one problem, let's make it our number one problem. It's making our number one priority.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take just a quick break here, four or five minutes, and let Mrs. Ford get us some documents for the budget update.
That too.
Okay, Mr. Goldberg, if you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you all should have the budget packet, which includes revised budget documents, binder clips, those are for you to put in your budget binder. And then you should also have this sheet, which is the, kind of a highlights, front and back. So we will start with, we'll start with the good news that we have, revenue. So this sheet here shows, this should be the first one in your packet, it shows a fiscal year 19 revenue budget, which is $390 million. I'm showing you projected collected revenue right there, $400 million. We had projected that at 399 when we originally did the budget, started doing the budget back in March. And then there's, there was proposed revenue growth of $9 million. And the proposed revenue budget without any of the additional revenue, without $34 million that we requested, would be $409 million. We have adjusted that for the revised budget. We did get a notice from the state in June that showed $293,000 decrease in BEP funding from what they had provided in April. And then we also, I realized that I needed to add charter, school authorizer fees, those were not included in the original budget. And then one benefit of doing another budget now is that we've got three more months of collection data. So for sales tax, we are going to collect about $1 million more than we previously projected. So we added $1 million here to the budget as well as another $100,000 to property tax to take our proposed budget without additional revenue from $409 to $410 million. So that is what we are proposing for revenue. We'll wait for, can you pull up that next one, David? There we go. The next document in your packet is a listing of all the budget cuts to get us from $443 million to $410 million. So as you recall, we originally proposed 4,687 positions and it was $443 million. Instead of read through that document, I'm going to use this highlight page to refer to some of the cuts. If, if you'll switch over to that one, David? Thank you. So on this side, we'll start with accelerating student achievement. So we have cut the budget from $443 million to $410 million, which is a total of a $33 million decrease. Under accelerating student achievement, we have $10 million worth of cuts and those include cutting reading interventionists to elementary schools, 28 positions, cutting in-school suspension monitors in high schools, 16 and a half positions, cutting attendance specialists, 15 positions, cut school counselors, 14 positions, cut social workers, 15 positions, cut special ed education teachers, five positions, cut special ed assistants, 15 positions, cut ESL teachers, four positions, cut technology integration specialists, five positions, cut six assistant principals, five regular ed teachers, six clerical support positions. We are cutting the elementary content lead teachers and RTI lead teachers, which is nine positions, and we have cut allocations for art and music supplies as well as resources, resource allocations to learning communities. So that makes up most all of our cuts under accelerating student achievement. And that is a total of approximately $10 million. If we move to future-ready students, we have cut out the Hamilton County Promise, which includes early post-secondary opportunities and advanced coursework. We've cut five art teachers. We have cut full-time college advisors, which is equivalent to 12 positions. They will remain part-time as they have been in the past. We've cut the lead college and career advisor. We've cut a future-ready, two future-ready institute coaches. We cut four middle school Volkswagen ELabs and four high school Volkswagen ELabs. We've cut a grant facilitator, two instructional computer technicians. We cut the library ebook subscription. And we've also cut student technology funding, which is over $3 million as well as employee technology funding. So we currently do not have a replacement plan for one-to-one devices for, for students. So we will have all one-to-one devices implemented for middle school and high school during this next school year, but then we will not have a replacement plan in place to replace those once they start aging. And if we go, if you flip over your side and if we scroll down here for, for great teachers and leaders, so future-ready students was, so accelerating student achievement, we'll go back to that, that was 10 million. Future-ready students is about 9 million and great teachers and leaders is another 10 million. So in this area of our budget, we've cut the teacher raise in half from 5% to 2.5%. We've also cut those two additional professional development days from the teacher calendar, so we will stay at a 201-day calendar. And they will go back to getting $20 an hour in stipend money for professional development until that money runs out, which has been the policy in the past. We've cut the expansion of new teacher academy. We've cut intervention and instructional coaches, which is 31 positions. I skipped over one. We've cut teacher differentiated pay. We cut stipends for school-based mentors. We've cut incentives for hard-to-staff positions. We cut professional development for school leaders. We've cut the substitute staffing reorg that was proposed and we've also cut the applicant tracking system proposed by the Human Resources Department. If you go down to engaged community, we have cut out 850,000 of the amount that we had originally proposed for replacing general instruction school fees. We also cut out technology for parent-community engagement. That was about $1.2 million total. And lastly, for, for our last focus area, we have cut $2.6 million from efficient and effective operations. And in that area, we cut future-ready institute transportation. We've cut technology equipment investments. We cut five technology personnel. We've cut 17 maintenance personnel and we cut out five bus monitors for the opportunity zone. So those in total are the $33 million in cuts from the originally proposed budget to get to $410 million.
Dr. Highland?
Okay, Mr. Goldberg, I'm not sure if this is you or Mr. Fogel or Dr. Johnson. On the, the great teachers, great leaders, from 5% to 2.5%, do, I'm sure, do we not, will we honor the PECA agreement going back with the two segments of the PECA team to go back and bring this back up for discussion with them? I mean, that would be appropriate, would it not? Okay.
Yeah, we, we had some conversation today and we'll, we'll get back together. They just missed us so much that we'll get back together here in the next few days.
I will say, what, what I've heard from them is that it's been a very conducive group to work with and I appreciate our leadership team doing that, doing that too. Now the 2.5% that the, the governor is giving us for teacher, that is only on BEP-funded positions. So what we would be funding out of fund balance would be, I, I'm ballparking, you're a lot better on numbers than I, sir, but I'm saying of overall certified people, that would be 1.6, 1.7. I'm ballparking what the governor would give us. So we're making up the other 0.7, 0.8% out of, out of the growth money?
The B, the way the BEP salary increase works is it's a 2.5% increase in the salary component in the BEP formula.
Correct.
So he put 2.5% increase on that component. However, we only get 52% of that funding because of our fiscal capacity. So that 2.5% equates to about 1.3, 1.4% in actual money that we get from the state for those raises. So we're covering the other half through local funds as part of the BEP match. We also have about 500 teachers that are not included in the BEP formula, so we fund the full 2.5% of those raises. And then we're also funding within that, and I'll talk, I can talk about that in a minute, but along with the 2.5% increase, we are going to maintain several items that we agreed upon in collaborative conferencing, such as changing the pay lanes, so to speak, from five to three, expanding-
You are continuing that?
Yes, that's included in the cost. Expanding one of the scales to 30 steps, unfreezing entry-level teacher for three years, unfreezing some of the steps later on in the scale. So all those changes are included in the, in the cost of the 2.5% raise. The one thing we did exclude is the two extra days for the teacher calendar for professional development. All right, David, if you'll go to that, that next one.
Mrs. Thurmond, do you have something on that before he, sorry?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this. Some of these things we funded this year, why are they not funded again? I mean, why did we cut stuff that we were funding- I mean, why did we, stuff that we were funding this year? The VW Labs?
So we, these four for middle school and four for high school, those were proposed additional ELabs.
Oh, additional ones?
The ones we currently have in place in schools are still funded.
Okay.
We had proposed eight total additional ELabs.
Okay. That's one of the things.
So everything on this listing were additions to the current, additions to the fiscal year 19 budget?
Well, that's, that one stuck out to me. I just thought, well, it, it doesn't make sense. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I may, I don't know if my, if my peers are interested in this, but I certainly am. I would think they probably would be, too. Is there available some kind of document list that would tell me, when you talk about these cuts and these different positions, how many of them are coming out of District 3? Is there a way that you can, can give me a document like that? And I would think that maybe they, these guys would like one, too, but...
Yes, sir. We can prepare that for each of the districts.
Because I know that my people up there are going to ask that question. So I'd like to have that information, if it'd be possible.
Yep. We can prepare that and give it to the board members.
The other thing, too, real quick, I'm sorry. I keep hearing this 19 million, 19 million. You're getting an additional 19 million. I keep hearing that number. But now what I'm hearing you say is 9 million. Now, am I, have I slept through something, or?
That's, that's a perfect segue into the next document.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So this, the next document in your packet, which is the one, it's called Budget Reconciliation Fiscal Year 19 vs. Fiscal Year 20 Revised. So it's before budget document three. It's the document immediately before budget document three. So if we, if you were going through your packet in order, it should have been the next So these are all separate, technically separate documents. That's why we just put them in a binder clip, so you could put them where you like in your binder.
Share with us tabs.
We did that with the original one. We were already cutting. We didn't want to waste any more. So if you look at this document, at the top, you can see the fiscal year 19 final budget. That's the final amended budget, the $390 million, 4,333 positions. The first section shows approximately $9 million worth of what we call contractual and unavoidable increases. The second section is about 11 and 1/2 million. And then we show some, some additional adjustments at the bottom. One thing I would like to explain about that is the growth this year of the 19 million, 9 million of that's true growth from what we collected last year. What's happened is, is for the past three years, we have under-budgeted revenue. So as fiscal year 19, for an example, we budgeted 390, but we're collecting 400 million. That's a $10 million gap, which, at the end of the year, that money just goes into fund balance, and we haven't used it in our budget. Now that we've had about three years' worth of trends of collecting more and more, it's primarily sales tax, which in an up economy, you're going to have increased sales tax collections. And with the growth in Hamilton County, we, we should have increased sales tax collections. So now that we've had that trend for three years, we're adjusting our budget by $10 million to move it from, instead of year-over-year for the past three years, we're moving it to what we've collected versus what we budgeted, if that makes sense. So we're increasing the budget from the 390 to 400 as an adjustment, and then we're adding the growth of 9 million. Next year, we will not have that $10 million adjustment. We will only have the growth.
So that's where we come from?
That's where the 19s come from. So, and the first section, for the contractual unavoidable increases, we have salary scale step increases of 2.7 million. We have charter school increases of 1.9 million. We have special education assistance transferred from IDEA. Those are 42 positions that cost $1.4 million. The reason we have that is because of the disproportionate discipline issues. And IDEA actually set aside $1.4 million that we're no longer allowed to use for the special education budget. We either have to cut 42 education assistance for special education, or we have to fund them through general purpose. We have chosen and recommended to, to fund those and not cut them. So, and we call that unavoidable, because we, I mean, we would be way out of compliance if we don't do that. The next one's the, the transportation contract. And then we have the state grants transferred from federal programs, which that revenue is included in the 410 million. This is showing the expense side. We have positions transferred from federal programs that have been funded by federal programs for a few years. They should not be. The state has told us that we need to focus on supplement, not supplant. And these could be supplanting, so we have three positions that we've had to move into the general fund. Those are two opportunity zone directors and a testing coordinator and accountability and research.
The question I had averaged at 130,000, is that...
And that includes benefits.
Yeah, you, okay. That does include benefits.
It does.
You know the level that it was, so that kind of explains it.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What were those positions, again? There were two opportunity zone?
Opportunity zone directors, elementary and secondary, and the testing coordinator and accountability and research. And then we have the custodial contract increase. We have principal and secretary for the new Howard Connect School. Those are obviously unavoidable, and we opened a new school. We have the IT maintenance contract increases, special education agency increase, contract agency increase. And then we have water and sewer, which started at about 140,000. We've just trimmed that down, and we hope it's going to come in where we budgeted it. But we do expect increases in that with, with bigger footprint, with additions at Snow Hill, with Harrison Elementary, with Howard Connect, and just general increases across the board. So that, that is, that adds up to 50 positions, 50 and 1/2, and that's just under $9 million. So, and if we did not have, if we didn't have the other $10 million budget adjustment that we can make to effect, it's really a budget efficiency adjustment, we're going to start budgeting those, those revenues we've been collecting in excess of what we've been budgeting. We wouldn't be able to do the rest of this stuff, because those are the unavoidable contractual increases, unavoidable and contractual. So fortunately, this year, since we did not get additional revenue, we do have this 10 million to do a few other things. So, or, sorry, 11 million. So we have the 2 and 1/2% salary increases in there for, for teachers. That also includes classified, and as it always has in the past, they're paired together. But it also does include the, the changes that we talked about with salary scales for teachers. And then we have staffing model growth position. So you all recall that we had the staffing model that we put in place that showed teachers either plus or minus in schools. Some were way out of whack, some weren't. That calls for 43 teachers. Six of those are actually art teachers from the staffing model, but it's a total of 43 teachers that it's per the staffing model that would be funded at 2.6 million. I'm going to skip the next one for now and go to special education assistance. We originally proposed 30. We've, we're now proposing 15 instead of the 30. We originally proposed 10 teachers for special education. We're now proposing five. We originally had nine ESL teachers. We're now proposing five. The assistant principals, we originally had nine. We've cut that to three. We think that these three are critical for, for those three schools. And then we have information technology positions. One is related to IT security, which is always an issue that we need to stay ahead of. The other three are the instructional computer technicians, or the technicians that reside in the learning communities. Now that we're putting another 12,000 devices out into the schools, we feel like we, we have to keep adding technicians to, you know, otherwise we're going to have a 1 to 7,000 ratio for, for trying to repair these or handle issues. We have ACT prep course. And then we have a transportation router, which is desperately needed in the transportation department. So that's another 11 and 1/2 million. We've also made about $385,000 in cuts, just, that's throughout the entire budget, across several line items between fiscal 19 and 20. And those are net adjustments. You know, there are some other places where departments had requests that we absorbed through the cuts we had made. So the total is 4,460 positions and $410 million. And that is with the 33 million in cuts. And then the only other thing, before, before we have any discussion, any further discussion, the next page, which is budget document three...
I'm like, you skipped. Why did you skip? You said I'm going to skip that.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I totally forgot. I forgot I skipped it. I haven't eaten lunch since, a long time ago.
It gets worse.
So, yeah. I'm glad, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. That's an important place. So we, we, essentially what we've done is the million dollars we have in, what we believe we have in revenue growth and have increased the budget, we have put in here to partially, partially maintain the elimination of general instruction fees. So we originally proposed 1.85 million. We've cut, you know, down to balance it, and we're using that million that we have in extra revenue to, to still partially offset general instruction fees. But, and to do that, we're going to have to bring fees back to you to approve next week. So we'll need to add that to the agenda, because the fees we currently have in place that were approved in May had zero for general instruction. We would have to put some general instruction fees back in place regardless, or school, or schools just won't have any money. So we're going to have to put some level of general instruction fees back in place. We would, we would recommend just doing what we did last year, if there's no money in here. Or if we have this million dollars, we can set a smaller maximum amount per school for general instruction fees, say $40, you know, across the board, or something like that. So, but I would say, that's where we put the million dollars. You know, if the board wants to do something else with that million dollars, we need to know what that is, so that we can focus on what we're going to do on the school fee side.
Mr. McLennan?
Yeah. Two things. I was trying to talk to Rhonda. Who controls the water and sewer? That's the city, correct?
Tennessee American.
All right, Tennessee American.
The fee is from, isn't that...
So we have, we also have stormwater fees. This is actually for water, this is, so the sewer, let me go back, sorry. Stormwater fees that we pay the city is separate, and that's under mandated expenses, and there's no increase there. That's the same as last year. This is the actual water charges from Tennessee American and sewer charges that's based on the rate.
Gotcha. All right. I was, yeah, got, got those two mixed up there. Does this new budget put us basically in compliance with the lawsuit and the ruling the courts, I guess it was last year, special, with special ed?
That's, that's outside my lane. I'll, I'll defer.
Yeah, so, I don't know, Marshall may want to chime in on this, but we're just, so it was a three-year inclusive plan that was presented. You know, obviously, it's a fine line conversation on that. So the reality is, any student with any, you know, any needs they have, we're going to work to meet any set of needs that they have. That's just what we have to do by law. In regards to inclusive settings, this, this does not get us where we need to be from the standpoint of making sure that we expand inclusive settings, but it gets us a step closer. And so we've got to continue to accelerate in that way. I don't know, Marshall, just anything to add to that?
Yeah. Basically, what I was going to say is that it won't be, we won't move as quickly as we had anticipated. It would slow down the process. It would still be evidence-based, but we won't be as inclusive as we had anticipated this upcoming.
Gotcha. And while I have the mic, talking about school fees, personally, I would like to see us use that million dollars for something else. It's, we talked about behavior, and if that's our number one priority. In-school suspension, something with the Hamilton Promise, career and college advisors in the high schools. I think those things could, could have a greater impact on students than, than doing school fees. It's just, I guess, the nature of the conversation we have to have.
Mrs. Thurman?
Well, I will disagree with Tucker on that. He hasn't had to go buy two kids a supply fee this year. One of them was $100, the other one was 80. Said to buy two of them. I talked to a lady that told me it's going to cost her $600 to get her three kids in school this year, so I say absolutely no. It's time that the taxpayers got something back out of, out of, out of this. And you said something a minute ago, and also about the city stormwater fee. It seems like we have connections with the city these days. I wish somebody would talk to the mayor and try to fix this.
One thing...
I'm just honest, okay? We didn't always pay the stormwater fees, and it's, and it's, I mean, now we have to pay it. It still ticks me off that everybody else gets to, you know, waive their stormwater fees, but they charge us.
Well, if I may, this is the final year...
Yeah, you work for the city, too. I'm, I'm talking to you, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I was there when...
Mr. Thurman, who else were you referring to?
You know who I was referring to. And, and some others in this room, but go ahead.
The, the agreement that was executed, I guess, this is the final year of a six-year agreement, where the city gives us back taxes for mixed drink taxes, you'll recall, and we're giving them back...
No, no, no.
...payments for, for stormwater.
They're, they're not giving us anything. Those are our, that's our money. And they were told they had to pay it. So no, they're not giving us anything. I'm going to talk about the stormwater.
Well, and so that was part of the agreement that was executed by the Board of Education six years ago. So, you know, Scott, I know Scott drafted, that was in on that, and the board approved it. And so the board actually executed an agreement to pay those stormwater fees for over the past six years, and the board agreed in that document to continue paying them going forward. And then, of course, the city agreed to pay us mixed drink liquor taxes for back payments, and they agreed to continue paying going forward. So the going forward part is, is a matter of law.
You heard what you said. They agreed to pay us the back because they, we were due that. They're not doing us a big favor here. They're, they're giving us our money that's our money. So I still don't understand why, no, the agreement we had with them is, is how much they were going to pay us for how long. So they finally are paying back all that they owe us over the last six years. So going forward, we still have to pay the stormwater.
And they...
And we're getting the, we're getting it on a regular basis what we should have been getting all along. So I don't know, like I say, that we were doing the city a favor to make them, so they didn't have to pay us all one lump sum. As you see, I've been here a long time, so I know all that business. But I still, I still don't agree with all the stormwater fee we have to pay the city. But anyway, also, you said the general instruction fee, get the parents to pay fees for general instruction fee? Now, you talk about running afoul of state law. I'm seeing that as a serious problem. It is against the law to charge a fee for any general instruction in this system.
So we've, we've had, for, since merger, for 22 years, we've had general instruction fees in place. It's not required to attend school. The law will not allow us to deny a child because they didn't pay their fees. Our total collection rate for general instruction fees for the, for the entire county is about 31%. So we collect fees from about 31% of enrolled children. We always, that's always how we, how we have funded schools and school general funds. That's why when we presented this...
Not always, but I'll let that be.
Yes, ma'am. That's why we presented this 1.8 million to eliminate those completely. With only a million dollars, we're not going to be able to eliminate them unless we're being punitive at school, so...
So we just need 100, you don't think, you don't think that I know we can find another $800,000 in this budget, a $400 million budget, $430 million budget, whatever it is? I'm going to call poppycock on that. $800,000, I've seen us find a million, two million, lots of millions.
We can find it if we cut something.
And like I say, the 10 million, the extra little 10 million padding, so, in other words, instead of 34 million, we thought we were going to have 44 million, basically. Does that 34 million was figured in that?
No.
Because we had already spent, we had already spent some of that 10 million, though, at the end of last year, then.
No. It goes, it goes to fund balance.
Well, we had a, we had a balanced budget. We added all these positions and said they were budget neutral, and I'm no, I'm no math whiz.
The 10 million's above and beyond the 390 approved by the board. We have no authority to spend that additional 10 million that we collected, because the board had not approved it. So that just goes to fund balance.
No, we approved it in last year's budget under positions that were there that we really didn't have.
No, the 390 included those. The 10 million is literally money that we collected and did not spend, and was not allocated anything.
And in fact, just put a point on some things about fiscal responsibility. And, and I think it's a testament to this board, we have, when you think about those one-time things that the board has done, whether it was ruse before I got here at eight or nine million dollars, whether it was $15 committed to the, the capital plan, 15 more million that we appropriated from fund balance, you don't have those if you're, you know, and so that's what he's talking about with the three years. He's been trying to clean it up and get more aligned to what the actual revenue that's coming in. But we've been very fiscal responsible in that context. But, uh, we, we've been very fiscal responsible in that context.
Okay. Well, uh, like I say, I, I will not, I mean, getting rid of the fees, since we can't charge them anyway, uh, we can't mandate them anyway. It's a big burden on parents and that's why I'm here to represent the taxpayers. I'm not here to represent the school system. I'm here to represent the parents. Um, I will not budge on that because to me, that's chump change. You know, 1.8 million is not that big a deal. Uh, so, um, it is a big deal for parents to come up with, but it's not a big deal for us to come up with. We, I've seen us do it many times. Um, so, this, um, these, uh, these, they used to be federal programs and now we're having to, to pay for them. Why are they not federal programs any longer? This is how we get in upside down in our budget sometimes, all these positions we find with grants, federal grants, and then all of a sudden we keep the positions. Is that one of those?
No, the-
Is it mandated we have these positions or what?
How, do you wanna talk about that at all, Nikki?
Yeah, um, I'll talk a little bit. So, the two, uh, the two positions were, uh, our directors, principal supervisors, and the other one is a, a district testing coordinator. Uh, every district has to designate a district testing coordinator. I believe the history was, um, that sometime during the Great Recession of two thousand eight, that there wasn't enough money to fund that district testing coordinator, so it got rolled into federal programs. That is not a federal, uh, uh, title administration role, right? Every district has to have a district-wide testing coordinator designated. Um, I think it was done, as I understand, to balance the budget when there was a budget shortfall on the GP side, and we've been doing it now for the last ten years. Um, and when we have federal monitoring, they point out to us, well, this is a position that everywhere else across Tennessee is being paid out of general funds. This is not an allowable and reasonable use of federal dollars. Similarly, we have principal supervisors across the district. Every learning community has, uh, an executive director of the learning community and we have folks to support those learning communities. We cannot carve out the opportunity zone and say, well, for the opportunity zone, though the district, uh, pays for, out of general fund, the principal supervisors and all of the other learning communities, when you get to the opportunity zone, we're gonna ask federal program dollars to pay for it. Again, the supplement, not supplant rule would say, well, if the district is funding the principal supervisors for all the other schools, then you must fund the principal supervisors for the opportunity zone as well. So, that was something that came up that for the last, um, two years, I guess, since we formed the opportunity zone, that now it's being looked at with more scrutiny, particularly since we organized the entire district by a learning community, and so it's no longer something special. We have every school under an alignment for a learning community. So, it was something that was brought up with us in federal monitoring to say, you can't really use federal funds to, uh, supplant monies that you should be allocating from your general fund budget because it's the same function that you're providing for all the other schools. So, to be in, uh, compliance, uh, and not put our, uh, twenty million dollars of federal title money at risk, um, we're recommending the transfer of three hundred thousand dollars worth of positions, uh, to keep in compliance for the twenty million dollar allocation we get for federal title.
So, these are both off of the opportunity zone, so they have, um, every other, every other zone has that and they're considered their own zone. That's not covered under any of the state money that we have gotten. We didn't cover any of that. And under the state funds that we got, the millions and millions that we got from the state, none of these positions were covered under that.
They're saying, they're saying we can't do that. The state is saying, when they give us money for the priority schools, for school improvement, it has to be supplemental. It has to be their language that they use as above and beyond in the statute. And so, now, they're, they're saying principal supervisors are not above and beyond. You have principal supervisors for all of your schools, and so therefore, they're saying you're violating the supplement versus supplant because if you're paying for the principal supervisor for Signal Mountain Middle High out of general fund money, then you need to pay for the principal supervisor for Brainerd out of general fund money.
But, there's not a difference in the state and the federal. I mean, you're kinda, I said we're talking about the state money, you know, we're talking about the federal money. So, they're both saying the same thing. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. I think we're saying the same thing.
And the federal money is close to the state. The state's responsible for monitoring.
That's exactly it. It's the same role.
For the reorganization, we were paying for an elementary operations director out of federal programs that I believe either two years ago or a year ago, we did the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
Transferred it from federal funds over into-
'Cause I see this a lot. We get a lot of things from federal that were paid-
I think a lot of this goes back to two thousand nine, and you'll have the historical context of this, but in two thousand nine, uh, there was a big budget cut. I mean, there was twenty-nine and a half assistant principals cut all the way to central office and to help work through that, probably not right, but what happened is some of those positions got put into federal programs and now it's kind of a correcting of that action ten years ago.
All right, Dr. Highlander.
Uh, if I could revisit, thank you. That added a lot of clarity, Brent. Thank you, uh, for that. If I could go back to something, do you know how much we pay in, in stormwater fees? Do you, I mean-
Uh, six hundred thousand, give or take. I mean, it's off the top of my head.
Okay. Um, you know, we're the only county agency that is paying for that. With, I mean, county government, no one else in county government pays that other than school system. And, and I realize, uh, it was done right before I came on the board, and Rhonda, obviously she didn't like it, she was probably the only one on the board when it happened. I think it's right before my group came on that happened. Are we locked into that in perpetuity?
So, the back payments aside, starting August first of two thousand nineteen, we are no longer under that agreement that was executed six years ago. However, my understanding from Scott Bennett, under the law, we are required to pay those stormwater fees to the city because they have given us notice that they are due. And what had happened in the past is they had never given us notice that they were due. They don't give the county general government notice because they only have a few buildings and it's really not a huge deal. The county general government is also responsible, as per my understanding from Scott. But because we do have, you know, eighty-something buildings, um, with a lot more asphalt and a lot more runoff, they give us notice that we have stormwater fees due, therefore, under law, we are required to pay. That's my understanding from, from Scott Bennett. Um, I would leave that up to the board if they want to challenge that as a legal issue.
I would like, I, I, I'm gonna do some research and have Scott do some research, if you don't mind, Chairman Wingate, to look at that. I think it's absolutely foolish that we pay that because no other, throughout the state, it's not being done by any school system or government agencies. And we're the, and, and I understand why they did it. Uh, and I agree with Rhonda, the, the liquor tax fee that was due to the county schools had been avoided by the city.
Right.
And, and foolishly, I think our board agreed to do that, and, which I think was foolish. I wish I'd been the negotiator for the board at that time. But, but I think we need to challenge that and need to look into it.
And one thing I would mention in that same regard is we pay three point eight million dollars a year in trustee fees that get sent back to the general fund and the county.
That's, that's correct. I, I totally understand that. I'm not, I, I understand where you're coming from there, but, but I think this-
Mandated by the state.
That is-
Right.
I don't think this is mandated, but I think we could-
Well, and that's, that's my, so, that's a state issue, um, is my understanding with Scott, so I would leave that down to-
I've got some precedent I would like to show, talk with Scott about. Thank you.
Mrs. Lennon?
Um, yes, I have a question, um, Justin and Marcia, about when you were talking about the special education and the, the three-year plan that we talked about at the beginning of the year. So, this is gonna kinda put that behind, correct? Um, and then, you know, going back, Rhonda, when we were talking about the code of acceptable behavior and that, how that is for you, and I think all of us, a priority. So, um, and I hear us all say that we do have our priorities. Uh, Joe was saying that it is a priority for you. We need to get these counselors in the classrooms. We need to take care of our students that need, um, extra resources, um, extra counseling. So, how are we gonna make that happen? You know, I think that we all have to think about what are our priorities? Um, are the student fees a priority? I mean, or are the extra resources in the classroom a priority? And I think that that's really what we need to look at, um, when we're thinking about this budget right now. To me, the special education is very, very important and we have to make sure that all of the, um, inclusive, um, yeah, that, you know, we have to make sure that we are meeting the state requirements. We have to make sure that all of our kids are getting the, uh, resources that they need, um, especially for, um, you know, I, I'm concerned about the reading interventionists personally. What does that look like? Um, I'm very concerned about that. So, where can we, uh, I, I, I'm, I don't care, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry about the, um, the student fees. I, I bet I would just as soon do away with that and put some more money into the, the reading interventionists or the special education or the student counselors.
So, what I would, what I would submit is, this is the obvious initial presentation of this, um, uh, and, um, next week, um, there'll be another work session around it and obviously that conversation around, uh, whether we appropriate those funds towards student fees or, or something else that the board so chooses, um, I think would, would definitely be appropriate. You all know that I'm always available, uh, as is Brent and our team just in general, uh, to talk through the implications. Um, I think that, you know, the reality is, and I would say this at a very high level, we have a strategic plan, um, and that strategic plan sets some bold goals and, um, a bold direction. Um, you know, uh, it, it takes resources to, uh, to achieve some of the stretch goals that we have. And, and the reality is, you know, when you, uh, don't have the resource that you need, it, it does have the potential to impact, uh, the acceleration around the goals. And so, uh, when you see some of the, um, uh, the inability to appropriate resources around, uh, the specific areas of our strategic plan, uh, I think it should be an area of concern for, um, everybody. Uh, it is definitely for me as your superintendent. So, uh, we'll continue to plug forward, our school leaders and teachers, uh, you know, our, our, our support staff, uh, all are committed to children and we're very appreciative of that, but, um, this is the reality of where our budget is. Uh, it appears to be quite status quo and will, uh, you know, I think we have the opportunity to come back, uh, next week and have additional dialogue about, uh, you know, uh, the, the areas within it.
Mr. Smith?
Is, is, I'm looking, I'm gonna refer back to this document, Brent, for just a second. Now, I'm looking at, you know, the, uh, cutting the reading interventionists, the, uh, in, in-school suspension monitors, attendants, specialists, school counselors, social workers, special ed teachers, special ed, uh, education assistants. And I kinda drew a line right there, but, but all of those have to do with behavior. I mean, they just do. They all have to do with behavior, which I think we've all identified as our biggest concern. But I'm conflicted because I've always said that I want to see school fees go away. I've said that, said that ever since I got here, that I'd love to see that go away, but then we have all these other needs. Uh, I mean, I, I'm just having trouble putting my mind around all this. Uh, that, you know, apparently, you know, some people think we need, some people think we don't. Uh, is, is, as I recall, in our, in our original budget, we had in there that we were gonna take some monies out of our sustaining fund and we were gonna do some, some maintenance work around all of our buildings and all of our schools. And I know that, I was looking forward to some of the things that were gonna happen up in District Three. So, what happens with that now? Is that just gone away or?
No, that, so that fund balance appropriation was actually, um, was actually done as an amendment to the fiscal year nineteen budget because that's when we took the money out. It was right, it was right before the end of the school year. So, that is done and the county commission has approved that. So, we have access to spend that money. Um, I, I would say that the projects on that list, you know, will, will always have to be reviewed, especially after the facilities, uh, report next week, so, or in two weeks. But, yeah, that is still there and still available. And we're working, I mean, Justin's team, Justin Witt's team is working on some of those projects right now.
Okay. One, one other comment if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I know that, uh, last week, when the, the commission took the, the vote and, and our, our budget was, uh, was rejected, and, but one of the things I appreciated, uh, during all that was, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Smedley made the comment that, you know, let's work together and let's get this figured out. And so, just a thought, uh, we're gonna be meeting together on the twenty-third, and I know that that meeting is a whole nother issue. We're gonna be talking about the, the survey and I, I understand that, but could that be a time that, that we do work together and, and let our, our commissioners help us figure this out? You know, what we need to keep, maybe what we need to cut, what we, and I, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, maybe that's an opportunity for us to, to do that. And that's just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Hill?
Our strategic plan sets our priorities. It is deeply sobering to see ten million dollars cut out of a budget that was dedicated to accelerating student achievement. It is deeply disappointing to see nine million dollars cut out to, um, that would've assisted preparing our students for what's next. We, on this school board, have been elected, each of us, by the very same people that elected the county commission. And I don't, I, I think that I speak for my colleagues here on this board when I say I was elected to lead. I was not elected to babysit the school system. Uh, I was elected to speak for the taxpayers, I was elected to support our children first and foremost and put their needs above, above all else. It matters to me, these Focus Five performance targets. I want kids to be able to read. Something matters to me. I want kids to be able to do algebra, to be able to go to the Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and pass the exam so that they can go on and get a high-paying job, so that they can get into the school they wanna get into, so that they can be the person they wanna be. And I think that the work that our school board has done shows vision. Dr. Johnson, you mentioned bold goals. It shows vision. Um, Joe, I, I disagree about, um, asking our county commissioners to help us figure out how to cut this budget because that's not their job. Our job is to set this budget. I do agree that we can work with our county commissioners to deal with some of these thorny issues that we've been discussing about stormwater fees, trustee fees. You know, yes, it's trustees, that's a state law. That's what a legislative agenda's about, y'all. So, I think we think big about what we want for the next five years for Hamilton County schools when we are working with our state delegation. When we're working with our county commissioners, it's not just, they're, we're not their kid brother and sister. We are their equals. And if we work equally with them, my hope would be that they would acknowledge the vision that we have for Hamilton County schools, and in fact, that they would rise to the occasion and actually have a grand vision for Hamilton County as a whole. Because that's the kinda place I wanna live. And thirty years ago, students graduated from Hamilton County schools and they got the heck out of town. And we want people to be here. In the paper today, it said, Tennessee is number, we have an A for business, we got an F for quality of life. I think we got a D for education. And that's at the state, that's not as a, that's not as Hamilton County, but this board wants Hamilton County to have an A for education. And I believe from the, the emails that I've gotten, the calls that I've gotten, that that is what my constituency in District Six wants. And I can tell you that I've gotten emails from people outside of District Six as well and phone calls and encouragement from people outside of District Six. So, I believe that our community as a whole believes that children matter, is not willing to write off an eight-year-old and say that they just can't learn. They believe that that kid deserves a chance. And so, we are in this reality that the county commission has determined that this is not their priority right now. I've thrown a million things against the wall. I talked to Dr. Johnson and Brent today, can we go paperless? I was advised you don't teach little children to read without paper at all. You know, what, where are the places? Because, Rhonda, 1.8 million you said was chump- Because Rhonda, 1.8 million you said was chump change to you, it's not chump change to me. And I think a lot of small things can add up to a big thing. And so, that 1.8 million that has now been cut to 1 million for school fees, I echo Tucker's preference and Kathy's preference, and I think we work toward that cut line that Joe mentioned, and that Rhonda identified, as these behavior folks are important, and that Steve said. He thinks we need more support for in-school suspension. So even, I mean, the, I think we are of one mind, that those behavior supports are critical. And I think they're going to add up to a lot more satisfaction for our teachers, they're going to be able to do their job more. So Dr. Johnson, that gets my vote. I would very much like to see how we can prioritize some of those positions. And I will finish saying I didn't really anticipate that I would say all that. But I will finish by echoing my colleague's request. I'd very much like to have a list of all the positions that have been cut in District 6. And I hope that, if you'll just please do that for everybody, so that we can show our county commissioners, and we can show our constituents, this is what we went for, and this is what we left with. And hopefully, you know, by 2020, 2021, we'll be having, or this is 2020, 2021, 20, you know what I mean, 20, 21, 22, we will have a more unified vision within our entire county, all of our county government, that we can get Hamilton County not just to be the fastest improving school district, but the fastest improving county for all people in it. Thank you.
Dr. Highlander?
I appreciate what my colleagues have said. One thing I'm wondering, before the commission voted on the tax proposal, I asked the question, the proposed, these proposed items, and most of which I think are really excellent that we didn't get, and I understand, but I asked the question, will this be spread throughout the districts? And I believe the answer I got was, they will be put where the greatest need is, and it's not yet determined. And I'm not sure if we're being fair to you, or whoever would put this together to say what districts should be cut from, because I'm not sure they had really been assigned a priority need yet. I mean, I'm not trying to let you off the hook on that, but I'm just saying.
We assigned, so right after that meeting, by the next meeting, we had assigned them by, we assigned them by our district organization, which is learning community.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we had it down to the specific school, but at the request of William Smith and Ms. Hill, we'll look at it by your individual.
Well, that's great. Then if that is possible, I was trying to, not trying to push you if it wasn't available, if it is available, I'd like to see all of them, district by district, like in one form, you could put 1, 2, 1 through 9, I don't mind being last, the first will be last, last will be first.
We can do that. There are a few that we can't, that are just spread by learning community and not specifically schools.
And you could phrase that, and you could put that, a parenthetical paragraph for that. Thank you.
One thing I'd mention, that where Mr. Smith and Ms. Hill both talked about that cut list, just, I mean, back of the napkin, that's $6 to $7 million for those, for that.
So let's see what we can get for a million.
Yeah, and that's why I'm, I just want to mention, that's what that is for that portion. So, you know, there would be choices on which ones which.
Brent, can you say that again, what you just said?
That area, that, I think he went down to, where did you go to, special ed assistance? That, I mean, that's about $6 to $7 million for that grouping, if we, for that, for what we had proposed. So to the extent that the board would want to look at reallocating any of the budget, that's how much that costs in total, and you can, you know, decrease it from there.
It's, if I could just say, I wouldn't be able to sleep well tonight if I didn't say this. So I firmly believe that high expectations for students and support and teaching the classroom from the standpoint of behavioral supports and the social-emotional needs of students are all critical. But with every fiber of my being, I believe if you teach a child to read, you change the entire trajectory of their life. So if you asked me for a half a cent of input, it is the reading interventionist, because a lot of the behavioral frustrations that you begin to experience outside, in particular outside of the elementary school, it's because of the frustration that I've experienced because I cannot access the curriculum or the rigor of the content at the middle and high school level. And so, I just drop, I just share that as a general thought as we talk about behavior. I know Bill Smith mentioned that, that literacy reading is the most critical thing, I believe, personally, that you can do. And so, just for consideration, as we look at that million dollars.
And just as a note to the board, 28 interventionists is $1,015,000. 1-0-1-5. So it's about a million dollars.
And just for the record, because a lot of people think of conspiracy theory, I did not set that up, and I did not ask them for that number. I'd just like to provide the board with information.
Mrs. Thurman?
You know, I am ashamed to sit here and say that we have a $400 million budget already, and we can't teach kids to read. I mean, that's basically what we're saying by saying we absolutely have, I mean, it just blows my mind that people learn to read before computers, and people learn to read by candlelight, and people learn to read even under fear of being put to death, that, I guess I'm just not understanding. I've had, read another article today, a lot of it has to do with curriculum, a lot of it has to do with how we teach kids to read, how we force kids to read, we teach them, we don't teach them the love of reading before we teach them to learn to read. We're killing that by forcing these kindergarteners and making them feel stupid because they can't read. We're trying to teach them things before they're developmentally ready, every study that's done about reading just about tells you that, I read another one today. You try to teach them, you just crown skills down their throat instead of trying to just teach them to love to read. And, you know, and I'm just, sometimes these reading interventions, are we going to be just piling on more and more on these kids? Like I say, we were teaching people to read before we had computers, before we had data. I mean, you know, homeschoolers can show you how to do it, you know, pretty much for free. So, you know, I'm sorry, but it's embarrassing to me to say, we're going to have to spend, get another 28 reading interventionists to be able to teach our children to read, and if we don't, it's a taxpayer fault. I'm sorry, that's just not a line I go with.
So I'll be abundantly clear that nothing that I said was that it was a taxpayer fault. I will say this, that I came from a school system that was extremely high-performing. In every elementary school, we had an academic coach that's primary focus was literacy. If you do not teach a child to read, and if you look at the reading scores across this district for the last decade-plus, I don't think anybody would say they've been where we would want them to be. And so, there has to be an intentionality and focus around making sure that students are readers. And I don't know, personally speaking, that there's any more important investment than giving kids the ability to read. And I'm not saying that, you know, you can throw a number at it to get it done, but I just know that in every elementary school, I came from a place where we had instructional support specifically for literacy. So that's just.
Well, I'm not saying not to have it, I'm just saying I'm embarrassed that for $400 million, we're not teaching kids to read. And it hasn't been over the past decade. I have newspaper articles at home that's been for the past three decades. Our kids have been failing miserably in reading, and we've added all kinds of support and all kinds of this and that, and I think we need to figure it out. And I just don't see that adding a few more million dollars, if we have any extra money, you know, dump it in, I won't even say K, I'll say 1 through 3, and try to teach the kids to read. If M.D. money is the problem, I think it's more curriculum than anything else.
I'll say a couple of things here before we go. The, I think the embarrassment for me hit me in 2015, when I saw some of the achievement scores, some of the embarrassment from lack of children being able to matriculate through the school system. And I'm just going to say this, and it's not going to be popular, but I'm okay with it because I've said it before, but for me, the embarrassment would be if I'd been in leadership for 14, 15, 16 years, and that was happening under my watch, that would be the embarrassment for me. And I had the opportunity to say that to a commissioner the other day, who's been in leadership for that long. I said, "I'm tired of hearing from folks who've been elected officials for three and four terms, how bad the school system has been under their watch. I don't have any time for that. So we're either about solutions, or we need to find something else to do." And fortunately, I'm proud to say, I think the school system's making progress. I'm also fortunate to say that I've been blessed to be able to be a part of some of I believe the school system is going to continue to improve, and eventually, some people are going to have to make a decision. It's not going to be gray anymore, it's going to be black and white. Either you want to have a school system that pursues excellence, or you don't. And increases will be made, achievement will grow, but there's going to be ceiling on that. And when we get to that ceiling, it's going to produce, it's going to produce a threshold as far as equality of life, and it's going to restrict all of us at some level. So, you know, the other thing I will say is this, and it's just my mindset, but, you know, I don't, I don't really care about the county commission one way or the other, what they do, what they don't do. That's not my charge, it's not my, it's not my duty to worry about what the county commission wants to do or doesn't want to do, or what they're going to approve, what they're not going to approve. I believe our charge, my charge, I'll speak for myself, is to try to help a superintendent who's the only employee that we have pursue excellence, and try to support that. And then, it's up to the governing body of the county to do with that what they want to, and I don't have control over that, we don't have control over that, so I'm not going to lose sleep over that. And I'm dang sure not going to spend a lot of time talking about folks that don't factor into what I'm doing. They just don't. They've got a decision to make when it comes to whether they're going to fund or not fund. And I, it's just my opinion, I think we waste a lot of time talking about a governing body that we don't need to spend a lot of time talking about. I respect every one of those folks, they've got a job to do, I'm glad I don't have their job. We've got enough on our plate right here. And I just, I would really encourage the folks on this board to consider, I love conflict. I do. I think it brings about meaningful conversation and change. But I also understand that part of the process is that we need to spend a whole lot more time focusing on what we agree on, and I would venture to say that we probably agree on this board about 95% of the issues. And we need to stop letting the 5% holds back. And again, as I've said many times, as an educator, a veteran educator, I got into this because I was tired, I felt, of my profession giving this town a black eye for a long time. And I'm, again, feel blessed and fortunate to be a part of something that I feel like is making progress, and is going to continue to make progress. And so, I've charged our superintendent at times to just keep winning, and I think we are winning, I think they're winning. I'll be hesitant to say we, I'm not the school system. I'm just elected to represent my district, to hold the system accountable. And I would just encourage all of us to stop focusing on the things we can't control, let's focus on what we can control, and focus on the things that we agree on. And I want to end on a positive note. Many of you, especially board members, know that we've had opportunity to have many youth groups from all over the southeast come to Chattanooga over the last month. Got a bunch here this week, had a group Sunday through Tuesday, had another group of students show up today, be here through Saturday, and they've got some more coming next week, and they've been everywhere from Sadi Daisy High School to Barker Elementary, and Dalewood, and Tyner High School today, and I'll forget a few, but, and more coming next week, hitting other districts. I would encourage, I know all of us are busy, if you get a chance, between 11:30 and 2:00, and I'll be happy to tell you where some of will be, just stop by and tell somebody thank you. Groups from Biloxi, Mississippi, Macon, Georgia, Kentucky, North Carolina. And I will, I'm going to go ahead and give you a heads up, I'm going to use it as an opportunity to shame some folks in Hamilton County, because it makes no sense to me that so many in our town have taken their ball and gone somewhere else. And it takes folks from 500 miles away to come and show a little TLC and love to some of our schools. But again, I try to hit on everybody, if you've had a school yet that's not been touched, please reach out to me. And we had more than we've anticipated, I think we're upwards, about 300 students have been here over the last three weeks, and there are more coming, so please let me know. But just want to give a shout out to those folks, and they'll never hear, but it's been good stuff, and I know the principals have thoroughly enjoyed it and appreciated it. So as a matter of fact, Ms. Anthony at Barker, she just keeps coming back, give me another group, give me another group. So we've split up. So if there's no other discussion.
I need to say something. I think that a comment was toward me, so I'm going to answer that. I don't know if you've ever checked my voting record, I think this school system has gotten everything that it's wanted with or without my vote in most cases. So I haven't stopped this school board from doing anything that it ever wanted to do, ever. I did vote against connected math, and that was proved right. Block scheduling was proved right. Single path diploma was proved right. Everyday math was proved right. Like I said, this board has gotten everything that it wanted, most of the votes were 8 to 1. So I really can't be blamed, or my vote didn't change one thing the school system ever wanted to do. I haven't held this school board back, I haven't held it back at all for anything they ever wanted to do. They've done anything they wanted to do. So to say that some people have stood in the way from this school system being great and wonderful, or whatever your comment meant, I don't know. But I didn't stop this school board from doing anything, because 8 to 1 vote, as you know, doesn't do anything. But I think all those things right there that I proved to be right on, that we spent millions and millions and millions of dollars on, that we ended up scrapping, and they were dismal failures, I was right on. And maybe every once in a while, if they'd have voted with me, we might have been a little bit better further along than we are now. But you can't blame somebody that votes, and the school system has gotten everything it wanted. Everybody in here that's been here a long time knows, got everything they wanted. And so, I don't know who's held anybody back from doing anything they wanted to do because they got everything they wanted.
Ms. Thurman, those were your words, not mine.
Yes, sir, you're right.
But I will say this, and it's true in any organization and anywhere, the buck stops with leadership. For right or for wrong, buck stops with leadership. Had a great conversation with the principal just this week, that, you know what, I haven't been involved with that, and I don't know how that took place, but I realize that if it happens in my building, I'm responsible for it. So that's.
That's right. Now, I was a member of this board, and I had, you're right, I've been on this board, but like I said, I've done all I can to change the trajectory, and I haven't had any luck.
Well, thank you for it.
So I can't be blamed for anything.
Many adjourned.